Good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see so many guests joining us this evening for the last formal business meeting of the school board of the decade. So, when we return, it will be a new decade for us. Mrs. Tanner, if you could proceed with the roll call.
Bassin?
Here.
Camson?
Oh, here.
But apparently not paying attention.
President?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Gabriel? Here. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 4.03, Presentation of the Colors. And tonight, we have our school board representative, Ms. Charity Warren, that will lead us in that.
A good evening. We request that all cell phones and pagers be turned off or to vibrate during the course of this meeting. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors. The colors tonight will be presented by Bogertie Washington High School and JROTC, under the direction of Lieutenant Commander Jason Hauser. Please remain standing for the presentation of the colors and the National Anthem. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors. Out. Ice. Freezing. Colors. Ready. Cut. Right. Face. Forward. Arch.
Is it a hat?
Please be seated.
Good job.
Wonderful, thank you. Item 4.04, our musical performance tonight. I did see Ms. Danielle Robey in the audience. I know that tonight's musical performance will be provided by the wonderful scholars at the Southside STEM Academy, the 5th Grade Chorus, under the direction of Mrs. Turner.
This is nice, we can actually see them.
In December, it seems we give a little more. Oh, in December, it seems we're not the same. Is it true, we're a little bit happier, a little bit cheerier, a little more like? Is it true, we're a little bit jollyer, a little bit merrier, and yet we stay bright? Oh, 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 in December. Oh, 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 in December. In December, it seems we do a little better, better. In December, it seems we give a little more. Oh, in December, it seems we're not the same. Is it true, we're a little bit happier, a little bit cheerier, a little more like? Is it true, we're a little bit jollyer, a little bit merrier, and yet we stay bright? Oh, 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 in December. Oh, 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 in December. What else we could always see? The better selves we want to be. What else we could always see? The better selves we want to be. What else we could always see? The better selves we want to be. Is it true, we're a little bit happier, a little bit cheerier, a little more like? Is it true, we're a little bit jollyer, a little bit merrier, and yet we stay bright? Oh, 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 in December. Oh, 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 in December.
Ms. Turner, if you could hang tight for just a second, if you might just go to the podium. I understand that this is the 5th Grade Chorus.
Yes.
So, you've been working with these students for how long to get them up to such a wonderful ability that we've seen tonight?
Well, this is my 5th Grade Chorus, so I've had them since September, but I've been at Southside STEM Academy for about four years, so I've been growing the music program. So, it started when they were in 3rd grade, you know, or 2nd grade, so they've been singing with me and they know my expectations, so they've been doing such a wonderful job this year.
They were wonderful.
Thank you.
That certainly puts a smile on everyone's face. So, before we get on to the next item, item 4.05, there are a few items that we need to adjust in the agenda for this evening. Can I have a motion on the floor to amend the agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I'd like to amend the agenda to reflect item 6.06 currently, amendments to the Acting Superintendent's Contract to be moved to new item 7.01, and that we change section 7, adjournment to recess, and move our adjournment after 7.01, making it the new 8, and that subsequently, 6.07 will now become 6.06, citizens' comments to non-agenda items only, and 6.07 matters of the board, matters of the board, and 6.09 will be a closed session, interim closed session.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion there being none? Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Aye.
Bassin?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel? Aye, thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have a public hearing tonight on our budget. We thank all of citizens and stakeholders for coming out this evening to speak to us with regards to the budget, so we will proceed with that item next. As a part of our legal requirements, we are required to have a budget hearing on the proposed school board budget. Tonight, we look forward to hearing your comments and input as we desire to make sure that your voices are heard, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Ms. Tanner, can you please call forth our speakers for tonight's hearing on the public budget?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Gabriel, Acting Superintendent, Dr. Birdsong, Board Members, and attending super tonight, we have eight speakers for the public hearing tonight, and our first speaker is going to be Lynda Carrington, followed by Thomas Smigiel.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lynda Carrington, and I am the Vice President of Leverage, which is a community advocacy program. And I'm here to speak this evening because I'm very upset and concerned to learn that Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, Ms. Cam- Camson, and Ms. Martin are advocating to add school resource officers to every elementary school. Now, there is, there is no evidence to show that expanding law enforcement in the elementary school or any school actually results in safer schools, according to the justice policy in this institute. In fact, data shows that it is a failed approach and instead causes a high risk of suspensions, expulsions, and arrests, and that funnel students even through in elementary school into the criminal justice system. This is the risk factor that increases students of color and students of disability. So, we ask you to please take this money and invest it in schools counselors, into school psychologists, into school social workers, and other supporting staff that would be trained and skilled in addressing safety concerns and conflict in the therapeutic or proactive manners, preventing the need for enforcement of the law. We ask you that you use this money to add evidence-based intervention such as trauma-informed practices and approaches such as restorative justice providers, school aides trained in working with students who display atypical behaviors. Thank you.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Dr. Gabriel, Vice Chair, Mr. Clanton, other honorable School Board Members, and School Superintendent, Dr. Birdsong. My name is Tommy Smigiel, and I'm the Principal of Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. Thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and speak on the 2020 budget. I'm here tonight as the Chair of the Middle School Athletic League. I was voted into this term, two-year term, by the middle school principals. I sought their permission to come here tonight and speak on behalf of the interest of our league. Our league is made up of all middle school principals, R-K and 3/8 principals, and athletic directors. And before I continue, I'd like to just give a big thank you to Dr. Birdsong for her continued support of the Middle School Athletic League. Our middle school league would like to make two requests to the school board and administration as you work through the budget process. As many of you know, and some of you have experienced this with children attending Norfolk Public Schools, some of our most dedicated school system employees are our coaches. Many of our coaches are teachers and stay back after school many hours, training and working with our athletes. Sometimes, they have to wait late with players when parents do not pick up their students on time, or if a school bus is running late. In most cases, the hours they work is below minimum wage. The stipends for our middle school coaches have not been updated in over a decade, putting us behind the region. We appreciate that the administration is working on comparing stipend positions in the region. The Middle School Athletic League is asking the school board to support any recommendations from administration of increases to support our coaches. Our second request is regarding another position that gives countless hours each year and makes well below minimum wage using their actual hours. Our middle school athletic directors are a godsend, working on average over 20 additional hours a week. Almost all of the middle school athletic directors are teachers, teaching four to six classes. All of the middle school principals will tell you that we cannot operate our schools effectively without this position, and that we could do so much more if the position was supported like Virginia Beach. I have given each of you a presentation regarding the duties and responsibilities of our athletic directors, and we have also compared what they do with similar full-time positions in Virginia Beach public schools. We are asking the administration and school board to consider increasing their stipend first, and then consider making these full-time positions like Virginia Beach. Thank you for your time, and we would love to invite any school board members to our future Middle School Athletic League meetings if you're interested in continuing the dialogue on this topic. Happy holidays and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Next, we have Jenny Bobby, followed by Cheryl Poe.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, School Board Members, and Dr. Birdsong. My name is Jenny Bobby. I have a daughter with autism at Maury and a husband who has a special ed teacher at Northside, and I'm a third-generation Maury Commodore. I'm here tonight to appeal to the board to increase the Special Education Department's training budget by at least 200 percent. More teachers, more teacher and principal training provided by qualified credential-to-expert trainers is desperately needed. School building staff openly admit they avoid contacting Special Education administrators downtown for guidance because they don't respond, don't know the answer, or because of collective incompetence. It's easier not to involve special ed. These feelings captured during conversation and informal dialogue echo what parents have been reporting to this board for more than seven years. Collective incompetence appears to be the culture of the Special Ed Department, perpetuated by its director, Janice James Mitchell. Staff have shared with me that under Dr. James Mitchell's leadership, there's no transparency. Staff turnover within the Special Education Department accounts for some of the highest in the district. Those staff who are hired are frequently not qualified, often do not have the necessary credentials, and many have a specific racial profile or social connection to Dr. James Mitchell. Department staff report that the working environment is hostile and that staff have filed numerous complaints with HR. Insults, threats, and verbal attacks are the norm. Fear of retaliation is commonplace and zero action is taken, no matter how bad the complaints. Dr. James Mitchell is never held accountable. Lastly, all of us, including this very board, have witnessed firsthand the inadequacy of our special education leader. Her staff states that she is largely unfamiliar with special education terminology, can't explain specific disabilities, or the need for specific programming. It's no wonder the district now finds itself in this nightmarish abuse investigation. I'm appalled by the reports of teacher abuse at Bayview Elementary School and believe this is more pervasive than anyone knows because of the leadership we have in place. Child abuse at the hands of school staff is every parent's worst nightmare. We all feel this could have been my child with autism. Any professional staff who knew CPS started an investigation yet didn't follow up to ensure the teacher was removed from the classroom is culpable. The principal, the executive directors, special education director, and pupil personnel director all knew the teacher was under investigation, yet did nothing to confirm the process had been followed. Dr. Birdsong has assured me that no children will be harmed under her watch, on her watch. And Dr. Gabriel echoes this sentiment. MPS must do better, and removing the director of Special Education will go a long way to show parents, this time, you mean what you say.
Next, we have Sharice Newsom, followed by-
This is not part of my public comment. There's going to be a CAC meeting held at Bayview Elementary School in January. We're going to have flyers out on the table. Please pick one up on your way out the door.
Okay, next, we have Sharice Newsom and Maya Prasad. Cheryl Poe, yes, followed by Sharice Newsom. Yeah. Cheryl Poe, please.
I'd like to share my speech with the board. I think I made copies for everyone.
Sure.
Good evening. First, I'd like to echo everything that Jenny Bobby said as a special education advocate. I, too, have experienced all of the things that she said, to include having to file and considering filing state complaints against Norfolk Public Schools because the Special Education Department is not doing what they're supposed to do, so I echo her comments. However, I'm here today because I'd like to start off by saying, good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, and members of Norfolk School Board. My name is Cheryl Poe. I'm the founder and director of Advocating for Kids. I'm also the president, president and one of the founding members of National Allies of Parents in Special Education, NAPSC. I'm here to make public comment on the board's budget priorities. A review of the documents for your school board budget priority causes great alarm. I note that Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, Mrs. Camson, and Mrs. Martin collectively advocate for school resource officers in every elementary school. The term "full-time security personnel," SRO, elementary, also appears on the shared school board budget priority charts. To be clear, a school resource officer, they are sworn police officers and not security guards. Their presence and purpose in school settings is to enforce law and police students. Using resources to put police in every elementary school in Norfolk will increase the criminalization of students of color and those with disabilities, leading to the tragic consequence of funneling very young children out of public schools into the juvenile injustice and criminal justice system. When police are in schools, they are also tend to inappropriately get involved in school discipline, escalating incidents that could be resolved by the school, but instead end up with the student being referred to the criminal justice system. Police do not contribute to a positive nurturing environment in schools. There is no evidence that they increase safety. Research shows that the most effective way to promote safety is to build strong, positive relationships between students and school staff, to identify root causes underlying violence, and utilize skills and resources to support students to address conflict, bullying, and other issues. Invest in students by having entrance and hall monitors by supportive, by a supportive school staff who know the student body well, can preempt, address issues, preemptively address issues as they come up, intervene as conflicts arise, and quickly identify when something is wrong that requires emergency response. Students deserve trained special education teachers, school counselors, paraprofessionals to give struggling students support and to keep students who may be, who may need interventions from falling through the cracks. Over the last six years, Norfolk Public Schools has been rated at 14th as a division with the highest short-term suspension rates in the state of Virginia. Within the division, students with disabilities read twice as many suspensions and exclusionary practices than students without disabilities. In closing, I ask that this board trust the research and will use resources that support and uplift students and stay away from practices that destroy the spirit and love of learning. Thank you.
Next, we have Sharice Newsom and Maya Prasad.
Good evening, Chairwoman Dr. Gabriel, Vice Chair Clanton, Acting Superintendent Dr. Birdsong, School Board Members, and everyone gathered here tonight. I am Sharice Newsom, President of the Norfolk Council of PTAs, and I would like to ask all PTA members and council officers to please stand or wave your hand. Thank you so much.
I'll wave my hand, too.
I am the mom of a student at Laramore Elementary School, but in my role as council president, I serve families and students across the city. I appeared before you last year around the same time to talk about the needs of Laramore, the leaking roof and the damaged ceiling tiles, and I thank you for your time and attention to that matter, because repairs have been made, and fingers crossed, I hear that a new roof may be on the way. I am very grateful for your support and for your attention to this matter. But when I became citywide PTA president this year, I heard similar maintenance concerns from families and staff at multiple schools and in surveys taken by PTA members and teachers. Their concerns are plentiful. They're concerned about mold, mildew, rodents, insects, peeling paint, leaky roofs, broken windows, damaged ceilings, and much more. Norfolk children deserve better than that. School facility conditions matter because they impact student achievement, as well as staff morale and family engagement. Every child deserves a safe, clean, and healthy learning environment, and it is all of our responsibility to ensure that they have it. That's why we are in this together. Some of the problems involve routine maintenance, but some of the problems are much more extensive and will require time, more money, and strategic prioritization. I've had the pleasure of speaking with many of you, tuning into school board meetings, and attending them, and I believe that you care deeply about school maintenance as well. At the same time, parents, staff, and the community want to see more deliberate actions to address these problems. That's why the Norfolk Council of PTAs has taken a stance on school maintenance by releasing its first-ever position statement, and in part, it reads, "The Norfolk Council of PTAs recognizes the funding challenges facing the school board and the city council which funds the schools. Nonetheless, we call on school leaders to identify priorities, develop interim and long-term solutions, and monitor progress. We encourage collaboration between school staff, board, and council members to secure adequate funding for school maintenance needs. We support the completion of efficient and effective school maintenance repairs. We believe that sharing timely and reliable maintenance information with families, staff, and the community will promote understanding and trust." Your board policies align with this, and we ask that you include more funding in your fiscal year 21 budget than you did last year. As the Norfolk Council of PTAs, we pledge to advocate alongside with you to ensure all students receive the quality education they deserve. You can find our full position statement online at NorfolkPTA.org. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, School Board. I am Maya Prasad, student representative for the Norfolk Council of PTAs and senior in the Maury High School Medical Program. I am here tonight regarding school maintenance conditions at Maury High School. I am learning many things in the building, however, it is in great, is in need of great repair. There are ceiling tiles missing on the first and fourth floors. It's been that way since my freshman year. The bathroom has been closed down multiple times due to plumbing issues. Parcel floor has been replaced by cardboard. I believe my peers and I deserve a safe and clean learning environment. I am calling all the school board to look within the budget to prioritize more money towards school maintenance and repairs. Thank you for listening. I am looking forward to positive progress in Norfolk Public Schools.
Next, we have Levon Pleasure, followed by Ravi Prasad. Levon Pleasure, followed by Ravi-
Hey, good evening, everyone, School Board, Clerk, Deputy. My name is Levon Pleasure, and a few of you know me. A couple people in the audience know me. I'm here, I wear many hats, but today, I'm here for a couple of reasons. I'm here on behalf of the- I'm here on behalf of the Norfolk Council of PTAs. I'm here as St. Paul's resident. Here as a support staff at Laramore Elementary School. Yay! And, oh, it's a, yes, a St. Paul's advisory committee member. The reason I'm here is to talk to you about school conditions. I'm going to echo what our PTA president said, that we, some of our schools in Laramore, luckily, is getting some changes made. Our roof doesn't leak as much. I'm in the gym, and yeah, it was really bad last year. This year isn't as bad. When it gets really bad, we do see some leaks, but so far, so good. So we're holding strong. But some of our schools aren't as lucky, and we definitely need to address those needs as well. And another reason I'm here to talk to you about is support staff salaries and classified staff salaries. I can just walk you through my typical day as a support staff. I work three jobs, and it's not an easy, easy thing to do. I also try to remain as civically active as I possibly can, and there is just, if I had a secretary, that secretary would need a secretary just to schedule out my day. That's how busy I am. I pull double duty as a public servant. I work for Norfolk Parks and Rec, and I work on Virginia Beach Oceanfront for the City of Virginia Beach and parking enforcement, and I can't, I can't do this anymore. It's very hard just to get up at 4:00 a.m. to be to work and then have to drop my children off at school and then go back to Laramore to continue out my day until 4:00, and which it doesn't even end. Contractually, I'm obligated to 4:00 p.m. The buses get there late more days than not, and I'm there making sure that our kids, our students, get home on the right bus, because we definitely don't want that. And I just, as much as I love my job, I've been there for 10 years, I don't think that I have it in me to do another year at Laramore, and that's really disappointing to me. So I definitely think that we need to look into the budget to have a livable wage for our support staff. I was so busy, I couldn't even write anything to prepare here, so this is always off the cuff, anytime I usually speak in public. That's just how busy I am. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Let me comment.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Ravi Prasad. Been living in the mermaid city for 20 years. My kids went to various schools here, and I can tell you, as a parent, I retired from the Navy and I proudly served this country. I grew up in a rural country where we won the school, wouldn't have lunch to eat, you had to bring it from home. Some kids didn't even have shoes to wear, they came barefoot, they wanted to learn. So I would hope that this great country, this great nation, and this great city would do better for our children. Some of the things my kids have explained to me over the years, my daughter said there was roaches in one of her sinks in the girls' bathroom, mildew, the roof leaking. I can't even explain to you the horrifying stories about arguments I've gotten into with teachers because they're unqualified to teach these kids. And they have a degree, but it's not in teaching. So the school board says, "Well, you got a degree, so we'll hire you to teach." It's not the right answer. These kids deserve better. And also, you know, we seem to keep hiring a new superintendent every few years. When are we going to get one that we're going to get behind? We're going to stake behind and let he or her do their job so the school can excel? That's a major problem. I can't even remember how many superintendents we've had. I stopped counting. It's just a disgrace to me as a parent. But putting police officers in lower-class schools is a very terrible idea, because I know when I was little and the kids were little, terrified of cops. So you put a cop in a middle school, a 6-, 7-year-old, which I do have a four-year-old grandson that goes to one of the public schools, he's in one of the kindergarten classes. I know he's terrified of police officers. I talk to him about it all the time. So it's a terrifying matter. But I would ask you, and I would urge you, to look at the budget. There's got to be ways. I know the casino might be coming sooner or later. I was at that hearing. I asked the city board what money is going to be trickled down towards the school system? What money is my child going to get in her school program? They didn't know the answer. Well, those are other avenues to look at if it does happen to get money into the school system. But our kids deserve better than this. And what saddens me the most is more males in the city don't want to speak up about their children and the stuff that we go through. It's just appalling. And there's a big racial divide in the city, and it has been for a long time, and they keep saying it, but I guess it's absurd because nobody wants to address the issue. The lack of communication. I could tell you that when Lakewood was built, a lot of people of color, excuse me, did not even know that that school was going to be built and all the wonderful programs it had to offer. If it wasn't for my due diligence and my wife's research, we wouldn't have found it. But a lot of minorities did not even know. So if we don't know, then how are we going to equip the children of the future to take your jobs? We're all getting older. Who's going to be all the stuff? So we have a problem, and we want to work together to fix it with you guys. Thank you.
This concludes our speakers for the public hearing. Okay. Thank you. This is for the public hearing only. We have agenda non-agenda coming on later on.
Are there three different agendas?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Will you sign up for the budget hearing?
For this one?
Do you want to speak?
Do you want to speak?
That's fine. That's fine. So hold on a second. If there are members that are wishing to speak on the budget, we apologize if Ms. Tanner doesn't have the sheet, but we would welcome your comments. So Dr. Fitzenreiter, followed by Ms. Greco. Are there any other individuals speaking on the budget?
I think her daughter went in. Ellen's.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right. Ms. Tanner, do we have that list?
This is what you have for public hearing that Security gave me, and this is the list for agenda non-agenda.
Okay.
So they may have signed.
So as long as the comments are related to the budget, then we're good to go. So then we'll start with Dr. Fitzenreiter.
Dr. Gabriel, maybe could you just explain so, like, there's what's coming up later on the agenda, so those that want to address specific items like Booker T. Washington Resolution and others know that that's coming up and they can speak on that separate from the budget public hearing?
So there are three opportunities for the public to share your voice, your concerns, your questions on matters. Tonight, the first opportunity is what we're doing right now, is the public hearing on the budget. That is for topics related to the budget. There is another opportunity in the agenda, which we have designated as citizen comments on agenda items. These are the items that you see listed on the agenda presented. And then finally, finally, there are comments that are at the end of our meeting that are citizen comments on non-agenda items. So those are items that do not necessarily fall within the budget, they don't fall within the agenda, but items that you want to bring to our attention. So we welcome all opportunities for speaking and engaging with the board. This opportunity is earmarked for the budget public hearing. Three minutes, everybody will get three minutes, and I apologize if you have signed up and we don't have the page, but we are going to make sure that we hear your concerns. Does that help to clarify? Okay. So, um, okay. Thank you, Dr. Fitzenreiter.
Myself and my daughter were both signed up, so we're collaborating.
Got it.
So, okay. Good evening, school board, and Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Ellen Fitzenreiter. I am the parent of a middle school student who currently goes to Northside. I wish to make an NPS, she's going to introduce herself at her three minutes, budget suggestion. But first, I want to give some background information to clarify the relevance and reasoning of my request. Over the past four years, I have struggled and been frustrated by the process of obtaining for my daughter the free and appropriate public education that she is entitled to as a child with a learning disability under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. What has bothered me immensely has been the fact that despite multiple acknowledged issues with decisions and actions of NPS administration and IEP teams at the school level for four schools now, there never seemed to be any accountability. I want to share with you now a flow chart that I made of how I understood what I would call the chain of command of responsibility that I thought would most likely be here at NPS, from the students to the top. At the bottom is 4,400-plus students who receive special education services under IDEA.
Each blue dot represents 100 students.
Okay. Each blue dot represents 100 students. To give you some perspective as to the responsibility of guiding the education of these children in the care of NPS, did you know that the Department of Learning Support serves a student body of, that is larger than 81 entire school districts in Virginia?
Above, that is our certified elementary schools, our schools, and our five high schools.
Can you hold that? Okay. Above that is the Department of Learning Support, then the Deputy Superintendent of Academic Affairs, currently in acting position, and the Superintendent of Schools, currently in interim. I confess, I am not exactly sure where the school board fits into all this. I believe for the past four years that the Department of Learning Support was tasked with the responsibility of supervising the implementation of a federally mandated program, IDEA, with responsibilities that would include, for example, leadership, vision, management, supervision, and otherwise oversee the special education programming in the Norfolk Public School District. Would you agree that this is a reasonable assumption? Maybe you have it, too. I asked during a recent CAC meeting, can you hold this, girl? Several questions during public comment that I have shared with you. I have also emailed it, I'll be emailing it to Ms. Rose Tanner, and I will abbreviate the responses, and you have them with you. I asked, "What formal process is done by learning support when individuals, teams, or perhaps schools have been found to be of concern to ensure that they are educated, that this does not continue with other kids and not just training or even a debriefing?" The response, second three minutes, "The Office of Learning Support and Special Education Services does not directly supervise building staff." I could stop right there. But my second question, "Are records being kept of repeat offenders and what is done with them?" So identified administrators and teams who have been found to frequently make inappropriate decisions about IEPs? If this question pertains to individual staff member situations are handled on a case-by-case basis. If there are concerns that require formal disciplinary measures, that is handled by the individual's immediate supervisor and the director of the Concern Department. I asked, "If there are bigger problems or pre-due process or mediation, once they hit learning support's radar, when does learning support step in and try to de-escalate a situation where the parent's concerns are valid in a timely matter? And is there even a process to do so rather than to just be defensive?" The response was that Office of Learning Support Special Education Services provides support when contacted by the school, the parent, or the community, school division staff. They provide support when a need for support is identified. So do you realize what this means?
It means that no one is supervising or leading special occasion programming at the district level in Norfolk.
Hold that. Hold that. Phew. All right. My mind is blown. All right, so here's our flow chart. Shway, where are the X's go? They do not support. They support. They do not manage. You heard me. All right. I quote again, "The Office of Learning Support Special Education Services does not directly supervise building staff." All right, here's the green guys. Here's our high school green guys and our middle school guys. In other words, decisions are made, for better or worse, by administrators and professionals at the school level in each individual school who have varying degrees of experience, certification, knowledge of special education law and regulations, not to mention compassion, with no oversight. We have been in four schools here in Norfolk, and I can tell you that our experience with school administrations has been this.
They do not want learning support, people poking their noses into their schools and business.
Learning support has no authority to make a decision on an IEP team. In fact, any individual present at an IEP team from learning support can only make suggestions, suggestions that can be utterly ignored by the school. What everyone thinks is happening, supervision and management of a student body of 4,400-plus students is not happening.
And it has been like this for years.
My budget proposal to you, the school board, is that room be made in the budget to hire a true director of special education if we're not going to fix what we've got. And we shouldn't wait until this proposed budget for 2021 to start this process, because with families like mine suffering, with children not receiving the education they are entitled to, and with NPS graduating students from special education with a recognized diploma at half the national average, it needs to be done immediately. You.
We will have Ms. Greco, then followed by...
And just as a note, we have Vicky Greco and Ellen Fitzenreiter and Carter Mellon listed under citizen comment on agenda items.
Oh, okay.
So if you all want to speak during that time, too, let me know, because this is for public hearing right now, correct?
Then I apologize, there was confusion about this being our first budget hearing of the season. Good evening, members of the school board, central administration, and NPS school community. My name is Vicky Manugo-Greco, and I'm a proud NPS parent of three, and also a Lake Taylor graduate of 1985. Here we are again at the first public hearing on the division's proposed budget. Like the recent public hearings on the casino, we seem to be speaking to anticipating what's going to happen in Richmond. So I don't really have any specifics. I've been attending or watching the work sessions on the budget, and I know you guys are deliberating on our priorities, which there seem to be a lot of. I'm really heartened by the attendance of stakeholders here. As the Education Director of the League of Women Voters of Southampton Roads, a founding member of Norfolk Gains, growing and investing in Norfolk schools, which came into being when we were experiencing our continued revolving door of superintendents and divestment of our schools and their funding. Anyway, on January 28th, we joined school board member Tanya Bassin, hundreds of educators as part of the Virginia Educators United to march on our Capitol for fully funded schools. Sometimes we wonder what fully funded schools means. I mean, if you guys have heard the buzz around the 757, which is an attempt to regionalization, we want to understand what does self-actualization and regionalism mean? But I digress. I'm here to say that we echo Virginia Educators United's statement that while we have become accustomed to celebrating any investment in education, we have lost touch with the importance of putting that investment in context. Most of Governor Northam's proposal of $1.3 billion is just adjusting for increased enrollment and inflation, and any new funding is put on the backs of working-class families who are already overburdened, already overburdened, like our teachers, like our aging facilities. We expect better. We want everyone to look at the schools' deliberation of what our priorities are, whether we believe that SROs are not the best way to spend our funds and to keep our schoolchildren safe, because that is the data. We do not want any more guns in our schools. We want everyone to pay attention, because on January 2nd, the governor is having a public hearing in Suffolk at the ODU Virginia Simulation Center, starting at noon. You can sign up an hour ahead and talk to him about the importance of pre-K-12 funding and all the members of the monies committees that will be in attendance. Please visit the website, the governor's website, because what's decided in Richmond will dictate what we can do here. Thank you.
I think Mr. Hicks stood up, but do you have you signed up in a different agenda? Did you want to speak for the public hearing and the other one, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, and then we have, so after Mr. Hicks, then it'll be Mr. Moline, then. Okay. We're going to make sure everybody gets their chance. And I see a hand, and another hand. Lots of public speakers. Mr. Hicks.
Good evening. Good evening, school board, Dr. Gabriel. I stand, because in reference to the budget, more so important than even your first speaker that came here as far as the budget goes, in reference to these resource officers versus possibly pre-K perils or people with the expertise to help these young people in special or people with the expertise to help these young people in special ed and whatnot. Not, we don't need resource officers, per se. Use those funds for actual specialized instruction to come in. If we want to have the resource officers, why don't we partner with the police services to come through on their regular routes and whatnot, to walk through the schools in that sense? Not another budget item that we're using those funds. Again, I want to stress, coming back to, let's get the specialized people that's needed. Very similar to, as I've come so often to talk about specialized STEM. We want some resource people, we want those specialized people in the STEM Academy at Camp Estella. This has been going on much, 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 much too long, to where we're talking about making it happen for these children, that we created as a specialized STEM program, but we don't fund it. We haven't funded it. They haven't put them in place. When are we going to change this? When is this going to change? When are we going to do what you've told the communities of Berkeley and Camp Estella about Southside STEM? It didn't just come because of the name, Southside STEM. We looked at that as changing the economic, that economic community change. STEM was supposed to be giving these children a chance to get ahead of the game. That's what STEM was all about. When we sit down, and with the board members and whatnot, it was about economic change for that community. Children getting something before everyone else got it. And we're talking about building the CTE school at the time. We said that we create middle school STEM, that will work towards these children being prepared for that time of when they're going to be able to walk out into the world and change this world. Folks, it's time. It's time to actually fund that program with the proper teachers. I mean, we have great teachers, and those children tonight, I mean, that was awesome. Great voices. So we know they're working. But let's budget, when we budget, let's budget properly. Not resource officers, let's get the specialized people in place. Thank you.
Carter Moline.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong and members of the Norfolk Public School Board. My name is Carter Moline, and I have a sixteen-year-old Norfolk resident child who was identified by the Norfolk Public Schools as both gifted and autistic, and was contracted by the City of Norfolk to Rivermont Tidewater School in June of 2016. I'll just add here, after she was run out of the academy for discovery at Lakewood. I am recommending that the Norfolk Public Schools do the following budget actions. Number one, fund a special education department, titled as such, with a designated special education department chair or special education director position. Number two, fund the attorney to represent that department. Number three, fund the entire tuition for private placements for special education without city funds or participation. Number four, fund and designate personnel in the district, including counselors and psychologists, to provide trauma care and rehabilitative support for the children who were forcibly restrained and secluded by private schools while under legal contract by the Norfolk City Attorney's Office. I am asking for these requests because the City of Norfolk, meaning the Norfolk City Council and the Norfolk City Attorney's Office, utilized the Virginia Public Procurement Act for contracting vendors for private day school for children with disabilities. Parents and children do not participate at all under that law. Norfolk Public School employee Denise Williams Patterson extensively participated in the latest procurement, and two other NPS employees, Allison Shukic and Amanda Thackeray, are listed as references for Rivermont Tidewater and Dominion Day Schools, respectively. This matters, because the three contracted schools charge a minimum of thirty-seven thousand dollars per school year, but up to sixty thousand dollars per year for year-round autism. These three Norfolk Public Schools employees have apparently therefore encumbered, in some form, millions of dollars in revenue to corporations, putting them in position of corporate support when IEP teams in due process hearings are supposed to represent the child. The city procurement contract is Mr. Ashley Barnes, who has also worked with the city regarding cargo van purchase and fire alarm testing. The city uses the same exact law to purchase frozen mice, rats, and horse meat for feeding the zoo animals. Dr. Birdsong, Chairman Gabriel, my daughter is not a cargo van, a fire alarm, or frozen horse meat. The Rivermont Schools under Centra Health statewide have secluded two thousand five hundred and fifty-seven children over the last two years, including three hundred and eighty at the Rivermont Tidewater School, which makes your city contracted vendor the third highest number of seclusions statewide over that timeframe. Your IEP teams represent this so-called healthcare company because City Attorney Bernard Pishko has forced procurement onto your district. It is time for you to divorce this man, his legal team, and the Norfolk City Council. They have brought much failure and little success. You need to run the district by yourself, and they need to go away and not come back. Thank you.
And by the way, Cheryl Poe is famous, always listen to her.
Ms. Delgado.
Good evening, my name is Rosemary Delgado. I'm actually one of the board members of the newly formed Sherwood Forest PTA. I'm representing us tonight. However, I will be speaking on my own behalf for a lot of the issues that I'm going to address, that I hope can fit into the budget. So I have two children in Sherwood Forest Elementary School. I can address several of the issues that we've talked about. Conditions of the building, and special ed. Those touch home. Special ed at Sherwood Forest has left a lot to be desired. Because of the condition of the building, my child has just now received an assessment that there was a referral for on August seventh. Do the math, sixty-five days. The condition of the school. So I'm going to say, I'm here because I am their voice. The conditions of the school and the level of infestation continues to be an unresolved issue. The reply emails are just to pacify, no resolution is offered. None. I know, because I've seen with my own eyes, not from hearsay, that it is still happening in the school. Is it because it's demographics? Because it is a lower-income school? Majority-minority? I tend to believe so. Last week, there were two confirmed rats in the school. I myself saw fresh rodent urine and feces on November twenty-seventh in the school, in two separate locations, on the same day. There was a rat that died above the ceiling in the tiles of the nurses clinic, where our children receive their meds. The meds were administered in the main office that day due to the unbearable smell of a rotting rat carcass, and a non-sanitary conditions. Our children's medicines are in there, so if it went through and ate through, they could be contaminated by those rats that aren't there, because nobody's seeing them when the reports come out. Pest control companies were in the school on November twentieth, twenty nineteen, during school hours. I was there for an SST meeting. There were two company vans, they were in there. I don't know what they were doing, but it was during school hours. But there's not an infestation problem, then why are they there during school hours? Because there is. There are at least five entry points from the kindergarten wing, seem from the pickup area. The infestation has yet to be contained, only air quality seems to be the issue addressed. With parents, by, I'm sorry. There seems to be the only issue that is addressed is the air quality by any of the Norfolk Public School officials, minus a few. And those have reached out personally, but anything that's been handed out on a large level, I'll sum it up real quick, on a large level is just about air quality. Please stand up and do what's right by these beautiful, innocent human beings, please. Please stand up and give these amazing, loving teachers a safe and clean place to teach. These children are our future. Teach them integrity. Teach them humility. Teach them this, by showing them their lives matter, and they deserve a safe, clean place to learn. One day, one of your livelihoods may be in their hands.
Were there any other speakers? Yes, yes, okay, sir. We'll have this gentleman right here, and then Ms. Smith Worley, and then.
Washington, Jane, Washington.
If you are speaking and have not signed up to speak, before you leave, if you could please give your information to the clerk, that way we can contact you. We have appropriate contact information, and we can keep proper record.
I think I may be on the list, maybe after it was collected, but.
Okay.
Some of you know me, probably see me around the schools and stuff, but I've been a blue-collar guy my whole life. A lot of you here are professionals, and are really good at what you do, and you know your craft, so I'm just going to say what's on my heart and what's on my mind. My name is Don Nash, I live over by Lake Taylor High School, and I've got three daughters that attend Norfolk Public Schools. I'm a graduate, and my wife is also a graduate. I hear a lot of voices talking about resource officers and whatnot at the schools. You know, I weigh many things, and I think about a lot of things, and I think about the gentleman in October that walked into Gant School, and he also walked into Maury High School. And of course, my mind goes to what happened last week. Are resource officers the answer? I don't know. I'm not the professional. You know, what we do is totally different, but we do have something in common, and that's my three daughters. So I'm asking you that you make the right decisions based on, do we need officers? Maybe, but is zero tolerance the answer? No, it's not. Are we to assume that all teachers are able to interact with somebody who has ill intentions for the student body or the teachers at play? I don't think we should assume that. I think we should assume that any situation where somebody is not supposed to be there, or somebody has a weapon, or something of that nature, that there should be qualified, trained people to handle those situations, because a lot can happen in a short amount of time. So, security in the budget is a big deal. It is a big deal, and I was looking at a list of priorities, and it's probably about middle way, where it talks about full-time resource security down that list. And I just really want to encourage you all to put your collective minds together and figure out what's going to be the best fit for all of us. All of us, thank you.
You mentioned Ms. Smith Worley, but I know she's signed up in another area, too. So did you want to speak twice, ma'am?
No, just once, and I emailed you earlier, so I probably did sign up in the wrong spot. Good evening, Charlotte Smith Worley, a name you might recognize from emails. Eleven-eighty-eight Kimsoar Road in Norfolk. Back in two thousand nine, when I had these T-shirts printed, I was trying to convince City Council to pay attention to our crumbling schools. All we had to do is get City Council to sign on and get it done. You do have some new schools and a revenue-sharing formula in place that is coming along, but what you do not have is a formal capital improvement budget. That was a shocker back in two thousand nine. How does city leadership know what you need without one? We were told back then that the city fully funds Norfolk Public Schools. Well, the truth is, the City Council tosses out a target and watches the school board scramble to figure out what gets done with those crumbs. That is how the school board is fully funded, then and now. Let me ask you this. How's that working for you? Well, that's a rhetorical question, because we all know the answer. The school board must develop a formal capital budget of needs, just as it does with an operating budget. Then, if the City Council refuses to fund that budget, let them do the cutting. So the finger-pointing of what was not been done points right back at them. Former City Manager Smith said, "How we spend our money says a lot about who we are and what we value. That speaks volumes. We can all see with our own eyes that the school buildings and the children within them aren't a priority. Make them a priority by advocating effectively. The best way to do that is to ask for what you need to physically improve our schools. Not doing so means children don't get what they deserve." Now, another real concern, not on the budget. Another real concern is not the condition of our schools, but the condition of our school board. All of you have finally elected, rather than appointed. In two thousand nine, I felt that was the crux of the board's lack of push. But now you've been elected to make a difference. Not fight with each other. You're supposed to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Shame on you. You need to put your personal agendas aside, realize that indeed, it's the kids' turn. Not yours, not City Council, their turn. Your behavior makes me sad, because infighting is hurting children, pure and simple. Adopt this mantra as your philosophy. It's the kids' turn, and aim at progress, not at each other.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bill Green, and my son is a junior at Maury High School. He participates in the concert band, marching band, ensemble, and all-city jazz band. And I'm here tonight, representing the Maury High School band parents to ask for your continued support for our school music programs, and in particular, our marching bands in this budget review. This fall, I had the opportunity to volunteer as a band parent with the Maury Commodore Marching Band, and I've watched the band kids grow and bond together through hours of summer band camp, after-school practices, concerts, parades, and many performances in the stands and on the field, supporting our football team on their quest for a state championship. Marching band is hard work. It's physically and mentally demanding. It builds discipline and character, and creates a strong sense of camaraderie among the students. I'd like to take a minute to show you how the band is closely aligned with the goals of the school board. Let's first consider our top goal of improving students' academic achievement and outcomes. A recent study published in the Journal of Educational Psychology reports high school students who play musical instruments score significantly higher in science, math, and English than their non-musical peers. The study's findings were consistent, regardless of prior academic achievement or other factors such as gender, ethnicity, or a family's income level. The band's many performances also provide great opportunities for family and community engagement throughout the year. Just in the last two weeks, the all-city jazz band held a community concert in suburban acres. The marching band performed at the state championship game, and the ensemble performed in the winter festival at the First Lutheran Church. Finally, perhaps better than any other program, I've seen the marching band build the sense of student connectedness that our climate surveys show is so low among students today. In closing, I'll focus on a few areas where we need your continued support in the budget. First, middle schools provide the majority of our new band students each year. The smaller middle schools reported a reduction in funding per student last year, something to do with the formula changing. If this continues next year, it'll have a growing impact on our high school music programs, likely resulting in reduced enrollment and participation. Second, our marching bands have no paid support staff like we see in other districts. What the band directors do is incredible, but they're literally a one-person show. What the band directors do is incredible, but they're literally a one-person show. Assistant directors are sorely needed at our high schools. Last, while support for our school's music office has been great, the need is more than they can meet. Uniforms need to be dry cleaned regularly, worn shoes and hats need to be replaced, and old instruments need repair. We ask that you carefully consider the tremendous benefits of our band programs as well as the needs I've mentioned as you weigh the challenges of next year's budget. Thank you for your time and your service to our community and go Commodores.
Mr. Washington.
Bless you.
Happy holidays to everybody. The ones that Virginia Organizing, can y'all raise your hand? All right. Good evenings, school council, whoever y'all is, I'm sorry. My name is James. My name, it's been a busy day and a lot of stuff going on. My name is James Washington. I'm a Norfolk resident, member of Virginia Organizing. We urge the school board to not fund putting police officers in elementary schools. Instead of, we want school board to invest to restore in practices we have been working on for the last year, trying to. There's just a lot going on. I feel, feel crazy right now for some reason. But the impact of suspensions and expulsions putting police officers in school will just make problems worse. We instead want the school board to invest funding for our own and recommendations. I don't think, we need cops or anything with guns on their side and around little kids because it only going to make the problem worse. In some state, a fourth grader was slammed by a cop. I forgot what state it was. We just need, we need more counselors than anything else at this point. We know, we, we understand that sometimes the kids get a little rough. I had behavior problems in school, but mine wasn't this bad. I had a counselor that really looked after me when I was coming up because I went through child abusing at home, neglect and all that and somehow or another, I was able to make it through because I have a great faith. We, we just need funding for more counselors, that somebody that really can look after these kids better than cops. Sometimes kids get intimidated by cops. I ain't going to say all of them, but some of them do. All depend what home they come from. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak on the topic of the budget? Thank you very much and we appreciate your understanding as we make sure that we accommodate all citizens and their thoughts on the budget. So, the next item on the agenda will be the superintendent's report, item 4.06.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clinton, members of the board and members of our community. We have a fairly lengthy video to share with you this evening because there have been so many exciting things that have taken place in Norfolk Public Schools within the last few weeks. In keeping with our almost monthly tradition, our video footage will reflect inspiring recordings of teaching and learning to include outstanding accomplishments that our students have achieved through extracurricular opportunities that the school division provides. And before the video rolls, I would like, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge and celebrate the 4A and 3A state football championship titles attained by the Maury Commodores and Coach DiRee McCain. And the Lake Taylor High School Titans. Commodores and Titans, another round of applause for their wonderful... Maury High School has not won a state football championship title since 1939, so yes. Yes, it's 1939, so you can imagine the excitement around this recent win. Coach Sawyer at Lake, Lake Taylor High School has achieved a total of four state titles, which is absolutely phenomenal. And I also must acknowledge Principal Karen Berg of Maury High School and Letitia Wade Jenkins of Lake Taylor High School for their outstanding leadership and their support of athletics. Not to mention that both of their schools are fully accredited, so we definitely applaud them. Without further ado, Ms. Tanner, let's enjoy the video.
Yes, thank you, Channel 47. Please roll the video, please.
Computer Science Education Week and the Hour of Code were celebrated across the district during the second week in December. At Azalea Gardens Middle School, students participated in a festive holiday coding activity and worked on programming Sphero robots to perform specific tasks. These sixth graders enjoyed the challenge of coding and finding solutions to programming.
They love the interaction. They love the fact that they can actually code something that can actually perform and do exactly what they wanted to do. It's a technological world we're in right now and you know, going forward, everything we do from here on out is all about technology. So, learning now will actually prepare them for the future.
Over at Blair Middle School, students in both technology classes were engaged in a wide array of activities. Some were normal for the class, while others were unique to the Hour of Code.
Well, my students are working on some computer science activities. We are doing Tinkercad, which is a program that's the software for 3D printing. We are also doing Lego Digital Design, which is in conjunction with Virginia Ship Repair Association. We do a competition with them. And then they're also programming EV3 robots this morning. Oh, they love it and I love it too. We learn new things together and they learn something that they can take to high school and beyond.
We are programming robots. Right now, I'm using the sensor to program the robot to turn, do a swing turn, go backwards or go forward. It's fun because at other schools, I don't think you can find this opportunity to like program robots, make them say hello, make them talk. It's, it's very fun.
I think it's a great thing to have here at Blair and it teaches a lot of kids that there aren't that many limits in terms of stuff like this and that it's really accessible, that you can do this at a time and age now. I do want to carry this out into my future, especially after seeing that my dad's job, he did a year program at another company and I saw this is really applied today in modern jobs and that it can be very helpful.
Berkeley Camp Estella Early Childhood Center was recognized as an Apple Distinguished School for the second time during a special ceremony. Pre-K 3 and 4 students marched through the halls along with the Lake Taylor High School drum line to open the event. Speakers from the city, school district, and Apple all spoke about what the award means and how this partnership benefits students and staff alike. As the only Apple Distinguished School for 3- and 4-year-olds in the world, Berkeley Camp Estella will be providing this innovative technology to their students for three more years.
It means a lot. I am so proud of the work that we're doing each and every day in the classrooms, how we have transformed our classrooms to 21st century learning environments. The capacity level of my teachers to integrate technology throughout the creative curriculum is phenomenal. It's just a phenomenal place to be and it's so wonderful to be able to share this recognition with my entire school family.
We are on the cutting edge in Norfolk Public Schools and there are so many wonderful things going on in our division and this certainly is one of the many exciting things. We're extremely excited about the Apple Distinguished Award and it's just the beginning. And so, we're looking for additional great things from this learning center, so we're extremely excited about this initiative.
It's great. I mean, he gets exposed to technology that he wouldn't be exposed to at home. I mean, we don't have these things and he seems to enjoy it. I see it the most, I think, in his reading. It's really interesting and he's also really, really good with certain apps that we don't really expose to at home very much. He seems to pick it up really quickly.
I like it a lot. I mean, you know how the times now is changing and everything's going to technology and the way that they're picking up on it is, is fascinating actually. I, I can't even explain it. It's, it's, it's really growing, really improving and like I said before, like just being in the technology field of things, it's advancing a lot more than I would expect it to.
Students and staff members at Camp Allen Elementary welcomed Congresswoman Elaine Loria to their school in November. She began her visit by meeting with faculty and staff about their unique needs and concerns due to the large amount of military-connected students that attend the school. Afterwards, three 5th graders took the Congresswoman on a tour of the new building and let her see up close the outstanding teaching and learning occurring there daily.
It's really great and I know that Camp Allen, you know, specifically where it's located within the city serves a lot of military families and you know, being in Congress on the Armed Services Committee, understanding, you know, how much military families move and how there are federal programs that, you know, help with schools like this. So this beautiful new building was built partially through DoD funds and being able to keep those grand opportunities available for communities that have a lot of military children is really important. So, being able to come see it and see how the children are thriving here just really brings it to life.
I always enjoy showing her what great things we have going on here at Norfolk Public Schools and I just welcome the opportunity for any of our elected officials, community members to come in, tour the schools, hear from the students, listen to the staff members because they are the true boots on the ground. And she listened very attentively to the needs and concerns that our staff and students have and I think she learned a few things from our students.
So it was awesome just to see my children engaging with her was the, the highlight of my day. We try to teach the students here at Camp Allen that they're part of a greater community, so having her come in, have conversations with them, and listen attentively to them, that was amazing for me and also for my staff, just to know that we're being heard and that our concerns and our needs and our achievements are being recognized. So that was great.
The Norfolk Public School Board invited delegates from the state, along with representatives from the city and community, to their legislative day at Richard Bowling Elementary. Prior to the discussion about the school district's legislative priorities, guests were invited to tour the school and the new Jordan Newby Library next door. This annual gathering enables our school board to let state officials know the school system's wants and needs before the opening of the General Assembly.
As we know, in Virginia, our legislature meets, it's part-time until it meets in January and it can be a short-term or long-term. And so, this year, it's very important for us because in Virginia, we've had a major shift in power and so, some of the priorities are different. And so, being able to have this conversation now allows us to kind of level set and set the stage so that we can make sure that our legislators who are here with us and abroad across the Commonwealth understand what we are championing for.
Listen, I think probably the number one priority that any of us have is educating our kids in a safe and productive environment. And I think Norfolk Public Schools is one of those exemplars throughout the state of things we get right, but nevertheless, we need to know, day-to-day, month-to-month, exactly what your needs are so that we can make sure that we keep up with our commitment to our kids.
We need to understand, boots on the ground, what the differences it can make to have certain policies or certain funding in place. And then it's important for us to meet with the people who are the local, I mean, I was on the school board in Virginia Beach, so I've been on the other side of the table and if, if they want our representation in Richmond, either on policy issues or on, on funding priorities, then we need to talk to them, find out what those are.
As part of Virginia College Application Week, Granby High School held a career and college fair for students. Representatives from two and four-year institutions, as well as the Armed Services, gathered in the commons area to give students the opportunity to ask questions and apply for acceptance. Some of the colleges even offered onsite enrollment, scholarships, and other financial aid. This event gave students the chance to find out about various options and access to the application process without actually having to visit the physical campus.
I think it's an awesome idea because most people don't have the opportunity to submit an application. Most people don't have the opportunity to go visit a college. I think this is a great opportunity where colleges come to us and they have the opportunity to see what they have to offer. And same with all the different branches. Branches of the military come every single day to school, but then when they get a sit-down opportunity, I think that works out great for the students.
Granby High School's Career and Technical Education Department hosted its ninth annual Lunch and Learn. This event is designed to get students who are interested in engineering together with community partners and stakeholders, giving them the opportunity to discover and keep up with the ever-expanding options available to them. It also provides the students and members of the engineering community the chance to have serious conversations about their career pathways after graduating from Granby. Cory Washington High School students listened to a strong message about life skills and preparing for the future. The National Stay-in-School and Career Awareness Program stopped at the school as part of this year's tour. Champions for Champions, an initiative of sports inside and out, facilitated this event. Former NBA player Wally Jones, along with representatives from the US Army, talked to students about being positive, making good decisions, and life after high school.
The Shoot for the Star program is a program designed from retired sports legends and is geared toward giving the programmatic structure for kids as far as mentoring, career awareness, peer pressure, mentorship, and how to basically give the kids a sense of support in the things they may want to do educationally on and off the court.
Over 200 students and parents gathered at Taylor Elementary for their family literacy night. This well-attended event provided some fun while celebrating and promoting the school's focus on reading and comprehension.
Tonight is our literacy night, our family night of bringing families together before the holidays. We are celebrating with our reading fair projects that our students have worked on all quarter-long and then we are going to end the evening with bingo and just some family celebrations and turkeys. We have, I think, 180 student projects displayed, so those families have come out to see their students' reading project and then we have also their younger siblings and lots of other students from lots of grade levels to enjoy the evening. These events are very important to us here at WH Taylor because it brings the families and the teachers and the students all together to celebrate our love of learning and just our fellowship and getting together. So this is a great way to start the holiday season, but we're combining our love of literacy and our focus on school-wide comprehension.
Granby High School celebrated its 80th anniversary by inducting five new members into their Wall of Fame. The evening, which was hosted by Granby alum Regina Mobley, honored each of the five inductees during a special ceremony and gave them the chance to talk about their time at Granby. Everyone was happy to return to the school and grateful to be recognized by their alma mater.
It is a warm feeling that is so hard to put into words after graduating 45 years ago and coming in here. And as soon as I walked in the door, I was welcomed by the NJROTC, my guide, and when I saw my name and him holding the card, it just was a very warm feeling and it just brings back a lot of memories and it's good to see that the Granby High School spirit is still alive and well.
Congratulations to Maury Senior Maeve Stiles, who won the Class 5 State Cross-Country Title. Her time of 17 minutes, 58 seconds was 40 seconds faster than second place.
I am beyond happy and I cannot believe it. I remember crossing the finish line. I was just so ecstatic. I, I can't believe that I'd finally done it and it was, I felt so much pride to be able to do it in the name of Maury and make Maury proud and my teammates.
Let's begin with the undefeated Maury Commodores as they traveled across the water looking for their first state title in 80 years, taking on Stonebridge from Loudoun County. First quarter, EJ Gibson goes up top looking for Keandre Lambert. The future Penn State mitten lion comes down with it for 33 yards and a six. Two-point conversion made it 8-0. Gibson calls his own number for an eight-yard touchdown run to up the lead. Commodores made it 21 to zip when Cameron LeBorne scampered for two yards. Gibson, who had 224 passing yards, hooked up with Lambert again to make it 28 to nothing. Lambert finished with 135 all-purpose yards and two touchdowns. Stonebridge made a game of it, scoring three straight touchdowns to cut Maury's lead to seven. But the Commodores resorted to ground-and-pound football to run out the clock and complete a perfect season with a state title.
I'm, I'm so dang proud of my, proud of my kids. They, I put them through a lot and my coaches, I put them through a lot. Words can't even describe it right now.
Man, words can't explain how I feel, man. I've been waiting on this since my freshman year, man. I'm so happy that me and my guys got it done. Words can't explain how I feel, man.
One title down, one to go. Lake Taylor Titans traveled to Liberty University in Lynchburg... Lake Taylor Titans travel to Liberty University in Lynchburg to take on Tuscarora from Loudoun County. Huskies are driving in the first quarter when Malik Newton comes up with the interception in the end zone. Titans go to work on offense. Junior quarterback Jeff Foster, on the keeper, runs deep into Huskies' territory. Few plays later, Foster goes up top to Darius Spate for the six. Extra point made it seven to nothing. Second quarter, that combo strikes again, this time from 13 yards. Titans up their lead to 14 to nothing. Later, Foster, who had four TD passes on the day, lays it out for Newton, who comes down with the sweet one-handed grab for the touchdown. Tuscarora would get one back to make it 21-7 at halftime. Out of the gate in the third, Spate caught his third touchdown of the game to make it 28 to seven. Newton, who had over 140 yards rushing, scored a touchdown as the Titans captured its third state title with a 34-14 win.
It's a blessing. All I can say is a blessing. School for my team wins state championship, it should feel good.
But the biggest challenge I have, believe it or not, as far as the state championship, my wife is a girl basketball coach at my school, and she has four state championships. And so I've been washing dishes, cleaning the house, and cooking, trying to catch her. And even with this one, I'm still one down. And guess what? She got a pretty good team this year. And if she won another one, I'm, you know, I got dish-bending hands.
For more news stories and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNPTV 47 or the NPS website.
Thank you, Channel 47, for putting together such a wonderful, wonderful video. Before closing the superintendent's report this evening, I would like to take a moment to thank our amazing students for working so hard each and every day to meet and exceed our academic expectations and for inspiring me, as the acting superintendent of schools, to make each day of teaching and learning for our students better than the previous day. So thank you to our students. I would also like to thank our hard-working teachers, staff, and administrators for their tireless efforts to ensure that our students have the tools that they need to be successful and to reach their full potential inside and outside of the classroom. A special thank you is in order for our parents and guardians who work in partnership with the school division so that our students have every opportunity to excel and become productive members of society. Finally, to our community stakeholders, I extend a gracious thank you to you, as Norfolk Public Schools could not thrive without your diligent and consistent efforts and support. So we thank you. So as we depart for the winter break in just a few days, I strongly encourage you, each and every one of you, to utilize the break, to spend and enjoy quality time with your friends and family, and to reflect upon the last six months of the school year. Please consider opportunities for us to come together as one, the Norfolk Public Schools' family, during the last six months of the school year, and ensure that we, that with our laser-like focus on our students, that we are doing all that we can do to ensure that we are providing to them, our brilliant students, the high-quality education that they deserve. So Dr. Gabriel, that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gabriel. We will now proceed with item 4.07, the clerk's report. Ms. Tanner.
Yes, I'd like to begin by inviting Robin Dunbar forward with Elizabeth River Project for a special presentation.
Good evening, Chair, Superintendent Officers, and the audience. My name is Robin Dunbar. I'm the Deputy Director of Education for the nonprofit Elizabeth River Project. We're working to restore our home river that runs through Norfolk, Portsmouth, Chesapeake, and Virginia Beach, the Elizabeth. Our education platforms include the floating classroom, the Learning Barge. It's docked right now at Grandy Village Learning Center. It is America's greenest vessel powered by the wind and sun. Another platform of ours is Paradise Creek Nature Park, our River Star Schools' recognition program that recognizes over 173 public and private schools in the watershed for doing environmental projects. And also the wetlands in the classroom, where over 7,000 students each year nurture native plants and plant them at our restoration sites around the river. Annually, all Norfolk Public School 4th graders have visited the Learning Barge. They participated in our Wetlands in the Classroom, and all ages participate in our River Star School program. All Norfolk Public Schools, all ages, elementary, middle, and high, are River Star Schools. In addition, over the last three years, the Elizabeth River Project received a national NOAA award to educate 21,000 K-12 youth about the best ways to restore our home river, the Elizabeth, and help create a resilient river that's facing flooding and the rising seas. So along with that, we worked very closely with youth resilient leaders from Chester Field Academy, who participated with a roundtable of diverse community leaders in creating a new youth resilient strategy. That's what each of you just received a copy of. That complements the city of Norfolk's strategy that mainly comes with an adult voice. This is the youth's voice. So the youth expressed their vision of a resilient community to help pioneer the strategy's vision. The vision of the strategy is to help our children become hopeful, resilient leaders who innovate and persevere to safeguard our community as our lives change with the changing environment. I ask you tonight to endorse this strategy that the students helped develop and continue to support their efforts as resilient youth leaders. The three goals that are in the plan, goal number one is to create a powerful collaboration of school systems and community partners to help. Goal two is to transform the teachers and the students into environmentally literate citizens regarding resilience issues. And goal three is discover all this through hope by making a difference. So I hope you take time to look through and read the strategy. Those that are in the audience, you can find it at elizabethriver.org on our website. And thank you, and together we're restoring America's great home river, creating a legacy, the Elizabeth. Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the clerk's report. Thank you very much, Ms. Tanner. Item 4.08, this is the opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda items. If there are citizens that are wishing to speak that have signed up, we ask that you come to the podium. You can adjust it to suit your height. The time limit is three minutes.
Our first speaker is Bria Jordan, followed by Ellen Fithzenreiter.
I sent my child home. She has to work tomorrow.
Next, we have Ellen Fithzenreiter. Is she on? Okay. She Huey Brennan?
Oh, that's her daughter, Shway.
Oh, Shway. Thank you. Vivian Hester, followed by Diane Bacon.
Okay. That's her, Hester. Yeah.
You have to speak to it first.
You gotta speak to it. Yeah.
Season's greetings to our school board and our Dr. Burksong. I'm Dr. Vivian Hester. I represent the concerned citizens of Boogaty Washington High School, and we are here on behalf of the resolution that will be discussed. We have come to this body many times over the past months, and we're asking again for support for Boogaty Washington High School. Recently, we've gone through some meetings to try to bring a resolution forward. The process is not quite what the concerned citizens expected, but hopefully the outcome will be one that shows some progress. We've been looking for, we've been looking at that proposal, and we're concerned that not many of the members of this board participated in that process. And we believe that that leaves us with questions in our mind. We want the process to be smoother, but we do want to support this activity, because Boogaty Washington High School and the members of the board, of the concerned citizens and the members of the foundation and PTA, we have come about Boogaty Washington High School. We still want to know where we are and what's going to happen. When the city budget is discussed earlier tonight, we were concerned that, we're hoping that enough money has been put aside to actually deal with the conditions in our schools. The students of Norfolk Public Schools deserves better. We've gone to meetings with the legislators. We've had all kinds of opportunities to meet with community people, and we want to be heard. We want to be sure that our children receive the very best. We want to be sure that Boogaty Washington is finally given an opportunity to have a program that we can stand with. And so I ask that you look at the document, if there are things that need to be added or amended, to do it and do it with diligence and compassion for our students. Merry Christmas to you all.
Diane Bacon, followed by Robby Prasad. Okay.
I want to thank Diane Bacon for coming and signing in for me, because I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to get here this evening. I have a special-needs child, and I sympathize with the members here who talked about their...
About the Special Education Department. So I'll stop there. So good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and, I'm sorry, city council and Superintendent Burksong. I would like to share my comment on the resolution that will be presented this evening. It has been too long and a hard road that we have traveled to reach this point. This resolution will enable the district to proceed with finding out the best solution to retain and maintain the legacy of the first black high school in Norfolk. I encourage each of you to vote in the affirmative, to accept the resolution, so that the future of my beloved alma mater will continue to be a facility of great importance in our city, and one that will continue to provide a quality education for all students who attend this historic school. And I'm trusting in your vote. I am Glenys Mason, the PTA President at Boogaty Washington High School. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Robby Prasad, followed by Bill Green.
The question I'd like to ask is the school realignment. They had conversations about, I think it's Furlong is going to be intercepting one another school. We haven't heard any feedback about what's going to partake there. And some of these schools are overloaded with students. It's kind of unfair to the teacher. Several teachers I spoke to in the past, they said the parents are not helpful in training their kids at home, so it's a problem in the schoolhouse. So, and the other question I have is the realignment far as what school's going to get fixed next, because I see the city's on a trend to build new schools, which is a wonderful thing. And I'd also like to commend the Maury High School for last Friday of the mishap that happened. As a parent, I feel very comfortable in the fact the school informed me very much of what happened. Police officers were on the scene, and any questions I had, they're able to answer right away. So I felt comfortable that the school and the city were tackling the problem at a very 100% level, which made me feel comfortable. A lot of our parents did, too. So that's a positive note for the school. Unfortunately, the incident did happen, but it got rectified very quickly. Thank you.
Okay. Bill Green?
Yeah, I'm all set.
Are you good? Okay. I'll take you off here. Barrett Hicks, followed by Don Nash.
Barrett Hicks. This time, I want to talk a little bit about St. Helena over in the Berkeley community as well. It's been brought to my attention that there's been a stench in the building for the last year that teachers and students, for whatever reason, has not brought it forward. But we need to get in there and get that taken care of. I mean, teaching and learning truly can't be happening in that city. I brought forward to you guys early in the year about smart boards over there as well. St. Helena again. Come on. Down in the beginning, down last year, still down. The community at large has asked a question about trafficking, the trafficking situation that's going on around the world, communities and whatnot. And we're wondering, what's the approach from the school board, along with the recreation centers and the problem of the police? Somewhere along the way, we've got to figure out something and put something together. This trafficking piece is truly a problem, and we have to do some collective things to combat it.
Child trafficking, is that what you're speaking to?
Yes, ma'am. Could you stop? Because, yes, child trafficking, we've seen a great deal of it as far as the, on the news and whatnot. And we've had some incidents right here. So I think it's a combination of where we need to bring our city leadership together from schools, how we have our children leaving the different schools and whatnot. We've got to do something together. And again, as community advocates and whatnot, we want to be a part, but we think that needs to take place. I had the pleasure of meeting with Coach William Harrell, actually, my former football coach at Lake Taylor, who was a pretty big icon. And Dr. Burksong was out at the game as well. So thank you again, and congratulations to Lake Taylor Maury as well. But he was telling me about a program that when he, while he was in place, there was an after-school program that was funded through the schools for athletes and whatnot, make sure that they actually went into an after-school program at 1:30, 2 o'clock, or whatever, but it was funded. I've been out researching, trying to get people to get behind us, to get tutors in the schools for these athletes. Please consider looking into that to try to bring it back. And again, that's, potentially, we could use some grant monies or whatever. We need to get out here and go to work. I have to finish with my piece again, back to Southside STEM. I will always go there until we get this together. My question is, will the students at Southside STEM Academy be prepared for high school? And with them being a specialty STEM program, will they be ready for, to be able to go into a governor's STEM? If we're specialty STEM, we should be able, they should be able to travel, there should be a pathway that way. The other question, and I'll end on this, and I thank you for your time. Will, or will or is Southside STEM ready for those children coming from ECC out of that Apple program? I mean, these kids are, you saw some of the video and whatnot, awesome. But we've got to make sure that as they walk in the doors at Southside STEM, that discontinues.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
If not, we're going to have some disciplinary problems. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next, we have Don Nash, followed by Levon Plejcer. Okay, so you're good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And Levon Plejcer left already. Okay. And Vicky Greco, we had you here. Are you good?
I am good.
And that concludes our speakers for Agenda Items.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Wagner.
You had non-Agenda, but that's okay. You come on.
Ms. Wagner.
Good evening, Acting Superintendent Burksong, Board Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Board Members. My name is Yvonne Peel Wagner, 1100 Mary Mac Avenue, Norfolk, Virginia, 23504, Ward 3. First and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Clanton and Dr. Gabriel for addressing the concerns of the constituents of Ward 3. I'm coming before the school board as a resident of Norfolk, a proponent...
I am coming before the school board as a resident of Norfolk, a proponent of equity. I am a proud graduate of Booker T. Washington, class of 69, you all do the numbers, and it saddens me to share that this school is the only high school in the city that the program was never given the resources to become the institution that it deserves. It was even stated by one of the members of the administrative team that the criteria to enroll in a program was only two points because that is the level in which the students could perform. Was that the reason that this school has been neglected? For many years, the constituents of Ward III and the BTW community requested that the board respect our community as they did others and listen to our concerns, to no avail. I am pleased to report that many in the community are elated that this finally transpired, hence the BTW Task Force. The task force included a cross-section of interested and committed community individuals to include alumni, old and new, previous teachers and administrators, PTA, parents, students, community organizations, BTW Foundation, several members of the concerned citizens, current teachers, and the school principal. After several meetings and discussions, a resolution was developed and voted unanimously by the community task force to present the resolution to the board to be fully funded for the feasibility study. It was stated that we should forego the resolution because there were millions of dollars available if we decided to become the CTE regional school. We will not be held hostage for unknown funds to relinquish our rights for discussion and process. Is that how other schools were treated? If those kinds of funds are floating around, why is it that our schools are in conditions that they're in? It is time that we put the rumors in storage and get concrete information on where we should go as an outstanding academic institution. Haste makes waste. We have already tried that with the STEM Academy in Campustella, Southside STEM, without a real plan. What do we have? We have a school without enough classrooms and elevators that can't bring robots down, to just to name a few of the problems. We had a Richard Bolin that was presented as an IB elementary school, which had not followed the process, and that title had to be removed. Let's do it right. Let's identify where we are, where we need to go, so that the legacy of the school, I'm almost finished, legacy of the schools will remain. UCB2B Booker T. Washington was given to the African-American community so that the schools would continue to be segregated at that time. Yes, it was substandard, but we took the opportunity and made it a great legacy. I was at a breakfast with Congressman Scott applauded Booker T. Washington for fighting to remain the only two African-American high schools in the state, nor can be in the other. As the saying goes, can any good thing come out of Booker T.? The answer is a resounding yes. Look around. And I know it because I'm somebody because God didn't make no junk. Let's support the resolution. And Mr. Jordan, some of that money that you are referring to, we will be more than willing to take you up on it and to clean up the mole and fix the school and resolve some of the safety hazards in the school. Let's give the students at BTW what they deserve, equity and the process. Again, thank you, Mr. Clanton, Board Members, for your support in addressing some of our immediate needs as ROTC room, the cleaning of the building. We are patiently awaiting the response from the administration. And I do know that this was on board docs. It was publicized, so everybody should have known it was there if they checked board clock and student, including the board member. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Sarah Gregory, Yvonne Peel Wagner, when you tweet. Thank you.
That was the last that I had listed. Did you want to open the floor?
Um, no.
Was there anyone else?
Okay. Now we are moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, item 4.09. I would like to have a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, there's a couple of items I wanted to add poll from the consent agenda.
Hold on a second. Mr. Jordan, hold on a second. Mr. Calhoun, I'm sorry, did you wish to speak on the agenda items?
I don't know whether we would.
We have for a non-agenda items.
Yes, sir, we do. We do. Okay, thank you. So what I'd like to do, Mr. Jordan, is have a motion on the floor, have a second, and then we can have discussion. And if there's items that you are concerned about or need to have removed from the consent agenda, then we can discuss them and make appropriate actions. You want to move them now?
No, it's a consent agenda.
Okay, all right. Mr. Jordan, then?
Thank you. I'd like to have the item for use of facilities report and the approval of the minutes.
Okay. So what we'll do is we will take out use of facilities report and the approval of the minutes out and make them decision and discussion items to be voted on separately. They will be now moved to item here, 6.06 and 6.07, and everything else shifted downward. So just to clarify, we will be voting on the personnel report, the student support services report, bills and payroll report, and the policy. That is what the request is for removal from the consent agenda. Ms. Camson?
Why don't we discuss this in the work session? Or are we just finding out that's being removed?
This is Mr. Jordan's request to have it removed as we are presenting the consent agenda.
So the normal protocol is not to discuss it ahead of time? We just get surprised with it?
Well, I did not receive a request from Mr. Jordan. However, it is a board member's request, if they do not feel comfortable with voting items on the consent agenda, that we have them removed.
Oh, yeah, I know, and I've removed some, too. It's just that I usually say it ahead when we're, okay, that's fine. I just didn't understand. I've never seen this happen before. Thank you.
Ms. Camson, just for clarity, when we were leaving, we ended our closed session, I had mentioned to Dr. Gabriel that there are a couple of items that I was going to ask if they would be moved from the consent agenda. It's been our typical process that this is when we would do that. So if there's, I apologize if there is some other protocol I should have followed, but I did share with Dr. Gabriel that I just wanted to, I had some questions on the facilities usage report, and I have a question on the minutes and just want to have the opportunity to have those questions addressed before I voted on them. Thank you. Madam Chair, I move to adopt the consent agenda minus item 5.04 and 5.06.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Assine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to the decision and discussion agenda portion of our meeting, item 6.01, the presentation of the external financial audit. Dr. Burtsong, if you would please introduce our guests.
So at this time, I'll ask Mrs. Rhonda Ingram to come forward, and she will introduce the school division's external auditor, and our auditor will be providing findings from our most recent audit.
Good evening, Dr. Burtsong, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, school board members. I am honored to stand before you this evening as the team leader of the Business and Finance Division for Norfolk Public Schools to introduce to some and present to others Ms. Aries Coleman, who's the Engagement Director for Clifton-Lawson Allen, our external auditors, who will be reporting to you this afternoon, excuse me, on the results of our June 30, 2019 financial audit. But before I turn it over to Mrs. Aries, I want to acknowledge Mr. Ray Reyes and thank him, who's the county team leader, for an outstanding accomplishment. For the first time in over 15 years, we met the elusive audit completion date of November 30th this year. In spite of losing two key positions at the beginning of the audit and some challenges, we met the deadline and we got our audit opinion on November the 19th. So I am excited about that. I know Mr. Reyes is, and I just want to thank my entire business and finance team for a great accomplishment. And now I turn it over to Ms. Coleman.
Thank you very much for allowing me to present the results of Norfolk Public Schools, the district's June 30 of 2019 CAFR. CAFR stands for Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I use some acronyms. I'll try to define them before I say them because I get sometimes an auditor ease, which may sometimes be a little off from what you guys are used to hearing. So I just want to say again, thank you very much to the finance team, Dr. Ingram, Ray Reyes, and everyone else. As it was mentioned, that the district did meet the Commonwealth 1130 2019 deadline, which they actually issued a CAFR, and it's one step beyond the actual financial reports, which means they will be submitting for a certificate for financial excellence from the Government Finance Association, which oversees the CAFR process. I'll do it. Okay, great, thank you. So I just want to share with you the results and a couple of communications that we are required to make as your independent auditor. So when you look at the CAFR, there's a lot of information that's in there, and it belongs to management. The finance team, you have financial information, you have discussion and analysis, which give a comparison from year to year. You have some notes which describe the financial statements, as well as some statistical information, which is basically from the city's information that's required to be part of the CAFR. When we say we do an audit, there are three pages that are in this report. The three pages belong to me and my firm. What we do is apply on the information that is from the district. We apply on the information that is provided from the district. And we are saying that the information that we saw or that we tested was reasonably stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, which are also known as GAAP. So the results of our CAFR, we gave an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, just the highest level assurance that an auditor is allowed to give on financial statements, which means that the information that we tested was materially stated and was in compliance with accounting standards. We also issue a report on internal controls or financial reporting and compliance with other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which means that, again, that was the highest level of assurance that we're allowed to give. Unfortunately, we cannot give a letter, issue a letter that says there are no problems. We only say that we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as we were performing the audit. As accordance with the Commonwealth's reporting requirements, single audit, which is an audit of the federal expenditures that are expended by the district, is also performed in accordance with the financial information. For this year, for fiscal year 19, we looked at two programs. One was a child nutrition cluster. The other one was the impact aid funds that are expended by the district. Again, with those two programs, there were no findings on internal controls or compliance related to the program. So again, there were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. For the school year 2019, the district decided to have an audit of the school activity funds. What this meant was all schools, elementary, middle, and high schools were subject to audit, the activity funds were subject to audit by my firm. We have finished the report. All the findings have been communicated to the schools. They have been vetted with Dr. Ingram, and we are waiting just for the some administrative wrap-up, which is a representation letter from management in order to issue the final report. But I do have the results here. I think that one's. Okay. Just kind of give you in general some of the things that we saw when we look at the student activity funds. You have where some of the items, as far as the timing of deposits being taken to the bank for being deposited, some formalities of just paperwork when someone is requesting a check request, is making sure that all signatures are there, they're in a timely manner, and that they agree to the amount that was dispersed. These things are readily seen when we do activity funds, and it really is a matter of just making sure that the paperwork is following the process. Now we'll go into, let's go back one, please. Thank you. Just going to required communications, which is the last piece of my presentation. We're required to make this of the school board as part of the audit process. As I mentioned before, our audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, and we made sure that the financial statements were prepared under those standards as well. When you talk about your financial statements, they have various aspects of them. So one is the qualitative information that is presented in the financial statements. I would ask you to look at the financial notes, which are after the statements, and when you look at note one, it basically gives you the accounting principles that are used to compile the statements. When the financial statements are prepared, there are some estimates. And estimates are, these are certain assumptions and kind of valuations are made to determine the numbers. And with that being said, when you look at your pension and your OPEP numbers, actuaries are making an estimate to determine how the actual liability will be played out in over 30 years, and that's been valued as of today. So that's an estimate. Depreciable lives of your capital assets. We assume that a truck will last 10 years, however, it may not, but based on history, that's how it is depreciated over the life of that asset. The district also has their self-insurance, so you have an IBNR, which means there are claims that have occurred as of the school year end or the fiscal year end, which have not been actually reported to the district. And so it's an estimate on how many claims are out there but haven't been reported at the time the financial statements are compiled. And last is compensating absence. That is paid for vacation, sick leave in accordance with the district's policy. And again, you're estimating how that liability will actually be realized over time. So we concluded that management has a reasonable basis for all the, let's go back, has a reasonable basis for all of the estimates, and that's really what we do with estimates. We go look at the underlying assumptions, we talk to management, and we make sure that there's a reasonable basis for stating this number. The financial statements did not have any sensitive information. We did not encounter any difficulties during the audit. There were no disagreements with management. Management did sign representation for the financial statements, which is required, and basically stating that all the information they provided us to do the audit was accurate in accordance with their knowledge. Management did not consult with any other accountants for any other matters. So basically, if they had any questions or needed any guidance, we were the ones that they consulted with. There were no, there were no items discussed with management prior to our becoming an audit or even fulfilling our obligation for this year. My firm became the auditor for the district last year, and each year we kind of renew our contract, and there were no discussions in order for us to renew the contract. There were no other significant findings or issues other than, excuse me, there were no other findings or issues. As I mentioned before, we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And also, the audit of financial information did not express, we do not express on required supplemental information or the supplemental information that's in the back of the financial Last but not least, over the next coming years, you have a couple Last but not least, over the next coming years, you have a couple of, we call them Gadsby pronouncements, which will impact the financial statements. You'll be hearing about these. The one that's going to be for your fiscal year 2020, you will hear us talk about fiduciary activities, and with that, we will be looking at how the student activity funds are accounted for in relation to the financial statements. And then for year 2021, it will be leases, where your operating leases will now be reviewed to determine if they are actual capital leases, and that will be presenting additional liability on the financial statements. That's it? So thank you so much. I am done with the presentation, and if there are any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Ms. Smith?
Ari, during the audit, I asked a question about our internal controls and processes and how they relate to the risk of paying a salary to a non-employee. Can you share the results of that with us?
Okay. So as part of that process, what we do, we do an IT, I look at different IT areas to make sure that the duties of individuals in certain areas or departments within the district are compatible. And when I say compatible, we want to make sure that those who can authorize, also not the same person who is so for, I guess, HR, human resources. If an individual is able to activate an employee to be active for the district, we want to make sure that there's some type of oversight, that they may be, they could activate an individual, but they may have someone else who is actually approving the individual to be entered into the system. As well as when you're activating, that's also a control on the payroll side, that that same individual is not also the one processing the payroll, so you don't have one person controlling the whole process. Therefore, you increase the risk of having any kind of irregularity, excuse me, I'm a little dry, or fraud. So in this situation, when Board Member Smith asked us about looking at this process, what we did is for the human resources, thank you, and your human resources and payroll department, we wanted to make sure that the duties of the individuals who were allowed to either activate employees, process payrolls, were actually compatible. And as reviewing that process, we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, which means that the individuals that we looked at, their duties were compatible with what they, what their access to those systems.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? I would like to thank Ms. Smith and Ms. Campson for serving on the Audit Committee and for your participation in this process. Thank you very much. Dr. Birdsong?
Thank you very much. Mrs. Ingram, if you don't mind coming forward again, Mrs. Ingram will be providing to you month-end financial and budget reports for the month of November 2019.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
As Dr. Birdsong stated, I've been giving you a high-level overview of our financials for the fifth accounting period, which ended November the 30th. Revenue received as of the end of November was $130 million, or 38.7% of our total budget. This compares to 35.1% for the same time period last fiscal year and 35% for fiscal year 2018. On the expenditure side, next page. As of November the 30th, expenditures and encumbrances totaled $117.7 million, or 35% of our budget. This compares to 33.4% for the same time period in fiscal year 2019, and 34.3% for fiscal year 2018. We have one budget transfer, I believe, for, that was $50,000 or greater for the time period, and that is attached in the packet that we submitted to you. And also, what we showed in a different format is the operating fund with different categories from what I just spoke about, and then this child nutrition fund as well, with any explanation of variances between last year and this year.
Are there any further questions?
Yes, I'm sorry, is there another report coming?
No, that's for, that's it for the financials.
Okay. Maybe I'm looking at the... Yeah, so below that, there's a list of additional items. I guess it's under, I guess for me, I'm looking at it as PDF, page number 10, it's the, I guess the reports by departments, revenue by object, that report. You follow me? So on, I'm using PDF page 10 because I'm never sure how to reference the page numbers at the top. It's...
Look at the report title, it's revenue by object code. Is that the one you referenced?
Uh, period 05 expenditures by object.
Okay, you're doing expenditures, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So there's line 116, 200 trays essential per pay, and then over to the far right, it shows that 100% is used. What is that telling us in terms of what that line item is and what it means for us moving forward?
That particular line item is when we have inclement weather, and we are requiring staff to come to work when other staff members stay at home. So in September, I believe, we had an incident that we call inclement weather, where staff stayed home, and then custodial staff still have to come in and check the bills and so forth. So their pay is tracked here, and we will be doing a budget transfer to cover that. We don't budget for it, but when it happens, we record it, and then we go back and make a budget transfer to cover that expense.
Okay. On the, on the next page, 52600 for telephone, it shows that percent used is 112%, basically. And I also noticed this for telephone and another area below. Is there something associated with our budgeting expenses for telephone that's resulting in us being at over 100% at this stage?
Last year, when the budget was developed, the entire district's telephone budget was not included in the budget. It was only for one particular area. So this is the telephone expenses for the entire district. And next month, you will see us presenting a budget transfer to cover the projection for telephones for the remainder of the school year.
And we didn't include it because we just?
It wasn't oversight.
It was oversight, okay. And, uh, there's another page. This one is PDF number 29. It's central administration, also period 05 expenditures by program. And it has accounts 114, 100, 114, 300, part-time security officers, 114, 500, part-time technical salaries.
Okay.
So again, I just, in those areas, I was just, basically what I did was, when I went through the report, I was looking for areas that were 100% or greater, and I wanted to get a sense of why that was and what that meant going forward. And this was another area where I saw that, so I was just trying to understand that you may do transfers later, but I just wanted to get a sense of what's going on here and why do we find ourselves having to do transfers? Is it, is it our?
And a couple of those, it's like we pay security here for school board meetings, and if it was not included in the actual school board budget, during the budget preparation site, when we pay the individuals, again, similar to essential personnel, and we will be doing a budget transfer to cover those as well.
So this is security for our meetings?
If, the one that says part-time security officers, that's in D-21, yes, sir.
So how, I'm not sure, so who makes the determination of security for our meetings? Do we make that determination?
But those are the, the security personnel who's out here during the meetings.
Right, but don't we project?
It's standard, pretty much standard operating procedures that we have the security officers here. It just was not included in your school board's budget for the security office, officers' piece.
So then in the, when we were in the workshop earlier, and we were discussing, looking at our school board budget and expenditures, is that something that we should be accounting for?
Yes.
Ms. Ingram, I do believe that in this budget, though, there was a piece about security in our budget, as we discussed earlier. I don't have my papers in front of me.
Well, I just, yeah, like I said, I was just looking at, but if it's, if it's something we need to account for.
It could be in some departments, but typically in D-21, most of the time, the security, because D-21 is, is administration in this building, and typically, that's where it falls.
Oh, wasn't put in for this year.
So if it's not in your department budget, I can go back and look. I don't have each individual negative balance here, but typically, that's what that is for.
Was a line item.
There's a line item, and it wasn't budgeted, as you said, for this year, but it had been in previous years.
Okay. So if we can just make a note for our discussion going forward. And then the last one I had, PDF page number 35, it's facilities improvement expenditures by program. Top line is 300,000 contract services.
Is that one that has D-66?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So the top line shows contracted services, and again, it's at 145% used. So what's the, what's the impact then? What's, why are we at that point?
That one is costs associated with the Lake Taylor School transition.
Okay.
We had most of the costs associated in last year's budget, but there were some items that came forth with this year that were not, again, we did not budget it for those items. So that's another budget transfer that will be coming in to cover the costs associated with the Lake Taylor Middle School transition.
So just remind me, so when we get to the point later and we're doing budget transfers, aren't we, in essence, um, doing the Peter Paul thing?
In some cases, yes, but in these instances, no. What we typically do, we can't, we don't typically budget for contingencies, but we know things will happen during the school year. So a lot of what we cover to cover those contingencies is using savings from attrition for those positions that are vacant, that are on field at the time, or people who left with higher-paying position, and we hire a placement with a lower contracted salaries. So we use those attrition dollars to serve as sort of like our contingency when things come up, that we do budget transfers to cover.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions regarding the budget? Can I have a motion on the floor to accept the monthly financial reports as presented?
I move to accept monthly financial report as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Basine?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. Item 6.03, approval of the MPS Legislative Agenda 2020, Ms. Martin and Mr. Clanton.
Do you want us to make a motion?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
So I move to accept the Legislative Agenda for 2020.
Second.
There's been a motion, there's been second, any further discussion?
Yes. Madam Chair?
Yes. Ms. Basine?
As previously discussed, the board agreed to support the Virginia Board of Education's recommendation to consolidate the at-risk add-on funds with the prevention, intervention, and remediation funds to create a single equity fund, which includes an additional investment of $131 million. Therefore, I'd like to put forward the following amendment for tonight, for this, for the MPS Legislative Agenda, to change the language in the section that begins with continued to increase funding for at-risk add-on, to support consolidation of the at-risk add-on with the prevention, intervention, remediation funds to create a single equity fund, and ask advantageous strategies to provide the supporting explanatory text.
Thank you.
A second.
It's been, it's been seconded?
The amendment.
Okay, for the amendment.
For the amendment.
For the amendment. Is there any further discussion regarding the amendment? Ms. Tanner, if you can please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. Item 6.04, Booker T. Washington. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me take a step back. We're going to vote on the motion as amended. So the motion on the floor is to accept the Legislative Agenda with the amendment. Is there any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, if you can call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. Next item on the agenda, 6.04, Booker T. Washington High School Resolution. Mr. Clanton?
Madam Chair, on the Booker T. Washington High School Phase 1 feasibility study resolution presented on Wednesday, December 18, 2019, whereas the current Booker T. Washington High School opened in September 1974 at a cost of just $8 million, whereas Booker T. Washington High School has a long and rich history in the city of Norfolk and in the Commonwealth of Virginia, whereas Booker T. Washington High School is one of two remaining historically black schools in the Commonwealth. Whereas, over the past decade, Booker T. Washington High School's enrollment has decreased to an average of 970 students. Whereas, in 2018, the school board of the city of Norfolk voted to maintain the present location and name of Booker T. Washington High School. Whereas, a comprehensive study of the school's academic programs and how they align with the current physical structure has not been conducted since the opening of the existing structure in 1974. Whereas, it is critically important to ensure that all five of Norfolk's high schools have an active and academically challenging academy program. Whereas, it is a desire of the school and surrounding community to ensure that Booker T. Washington High School has a vibrant and competitive academy that will retain and attract a diverse group of students from across the city. Whereas, it is vitally important to include this action into the overall facility planning and funding of Norfolk Public Schools. Whereas, it is essential to bring stakeholders together to provide input into what the future academic programs has in store for Booker T. Washington High School. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Norfolk School Board includes in its FYI 2020, 2021 budget funding to complete a Phase 1 feasibility study for Booker T. Washington High School and present the report by February 2021 to the school board and stakeholders for future action. Moved by myself, Carlos Clanton, Vice Chairman, Ward 3 member.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Basine?
I have some questions about the, well, I have questions about the task force, and I have questions about the, the involvement and recommendation of the administration regarding the, this particular resolution, and would like to hear from Dr. Birdsong before we take a vote on this, if that's possible.
Absolutely. Dr. Birdsong?
Good afternoon, good evening again. So as it relates to Booker T. Washington High School, I want to make it very clear. For the past several years, we have witnessed community members come to the microphone and voice concerns about Booker T. Washington, the facility, the specialty program, and other concerns about the building's condition. We've also heard from the principal that she would like to expand programming in the school. She has said that, and she's prepared to move forward. So while I will not participate in any political back and forth around this, for me, at the end of the day, we need to do something. We need to move forward with looking at the program and making sure that we give our students the very best possible opportunities to excel in the program, and to ensure that it is a robust program, so that students can decide if they want to work after they leave Booker T. Washington High School, get an associate's degree, go into the military or four-year university. And so that is my stance on that. I would like us to move forward to do something to show the community that we are taking their concerns very seriously.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan? Mr. Jordan.
Oh, boy. So I'm supportive of, uh, doing something. I'm not sure that this is the right something. Um, I, I feel like I'm, as Dr. Birdsong kind of alluded to, this political, um, back and forth. I don't want to be involved in a political back and forth. But I do want to try to figure out how to align the work of the administration and the board committees, and the educational planning, and the, um, processes that we put in place with the city through funding resolutions, uh, things mentioned earlier around the capital improvement plan. So it's, it, the process is very confusing to me. So earlier today in our workshop, when we were discussing, um, board priorities, one of the things that we had as an individual item on that list was Booker T. Phase One, Phase Two. We went through that process, and I think, uh, later on in the agenda, we're going to talk about some priorities that include, um, many of the things that we heard here today in terms of, um, safe and secure environments and facilities and so forth. So in working with the Facilities Committee, um, we've had discussions about this very item. We, at the last meeting, we had a discussion not only about the, uh, potential for a, um, facility study for Booker T., but when you look at the, the data and the work that's been done and the facilities conditions index, we also have, uh, needs for Lake Taylor. So Lake Taylor was number one on the list for high schools. Booker T. was right there together. And so if it's the will of the board to, um, bypass the work of the Facilities Committee, where we were working to come to the board, again, this time in January, to try to put forward a holistic and comprehensive approach so that we don't end up going down the path of, uh, trying to explain how we do a resolution for one school and not a resolution for, for all schools. The, the, the political side of it is, is difficult. Um, and that's one of the reasons why we brought in the consultants to do the, do the assessment, so we could share with the board, uh, share with the community, uh, share with the council what our global needs are. And I'm concerned about this approach, uh, for doing this, because if we act on this, then I need to know then, so do I go to, uh, Laramore, do I go to Sherwood Forest, do I go to James Monroe, St. Helena, all the different J. Cox? And then do we do individual task forces for each individual school and come forth with resolutions in order to address their specific needs? So I am a, uh, advocate for, uh, Booker T. I was taught I have to say that. I, uh, uh, my daughter was here to, uh, read something. Uh, I sent her home because I didn't want to further politicize what I knew she was going to say, because I wrote it for her to say. But I, I think that this is not, uh, a good process, that, um, I'm not even sure how many of the board members have actually read the Phase One study, uh, from Maury. Because I know whatever Maury does, Booker T. has to do, so I have it here. I've read it. And, um, and I shared, when, when Mr. Wagner was speaking earlier, uh, when I attended the end of the task force meeting they had this week, what I was sharing with the members of the task force was attempting to share was, um, the fact that in June of twenty eighteen, we had a recommendation come forward from the educational consultants to, uh, replace Booker T., build a new Booker T. Uh, and the recommendation at that time was to begin the process of having the board to do that and set aside the funds towards eighty-one million dollars towards, uh, a new Booker T. Also in that recommendation was for the board to look at, uh, replacing two elementary schools. And the discussion was looking at Laramore and, uh, um,
Terrleton.
Terrleton, and I forgot what the other, was it?
Willard and Lindenwood.
Willard and, and Lindenwood. So, um, you know, I guess Einstein has this quote where, um, the same mindset that created the problem can't be used to solve the problem. And if we look at, um, the facilities work, if we go back and look at the Council of Great City Schools report on middle schools, and their report on facilities and finances and other things that they've done, it's this type of process that resulted in the very inequity that people are upset about because we've been using this type of process for fifty, sixty years. And so the reason why we were engaged with the educational consulting in trying to get a comprehensive approach so that everybody can now with transparency come to the microphone and talk about what our maintenance needs are and what our construction needs are, is because we went through a professional, organized process in order to get there. So I agree with Dr. Birdsong that we have to do something. What I was recommending to, um, to the committee, to the task forces, they were discussing this resolution, uh, was at least two things that, um, that's still in discussion, but I'm not offering as an amendment this point, but I just want to share with you what, what my comments to them, uh, was or were. Uh, one, I think if we're gonna go down the path of funding the educational specifications, I think it's going to take another two to three years to go through that process, and I may be wrong, and the experts can, can correct me. If we're gonna take this approach for Booker T., then not only do I want to see us do this study, I want the board also then to commit, uh, in our budget that we're gonna submit to council funds to begin the process of setting resources aside, so when the study gets done, there's money there to implement what gets done. And, so, I mean, I just.
No, no, I'm not interrupting.
Well, you know, it's, I'm sorry I'm taking long, but this is, um, I feel like I'm at a disadvantage for, uh, taking the time to read the documents and, uh, and attend the meetings. So I think that we should do that. I'm also hesitant, because I know I am, in speaking, I am undermining, uh, the work of the Facilities Committee after I promised the members of the Facilities Committee that I would not undermine our work. So I would strongly recommend that the board not pass the resolution, um, but commit to what the resolution is asking us to do. And then in that way, as part of our priorities and as part of our discussion, we can still come out with the result of funding for the study, if that's the correct direction. But without creating the scenario now where I promise you, before I get home, I'm gonna get a text message from other schools that are on that FCI list, and they're gonna ask, where is the resolution for my school?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Jordan. Uh, Ms. Smith, and then Mr. Clanton, and then I have a comment? Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I have family members who have attended and graduated from Booker T. also. So I understand the importance of the school to the community. I support, um, putting funds to the facilities, rebuilding that school. The one thing I have a problem with is the way in which this information was presented to us as a board, and I'll just leave it at that. I just have a concern with how the information was presented to us.
Mr. Clanton, thank you.
Thank you. Before I got on the school board, um, I remember coming here and seeing the members of the concerned citizens express their concerns about Booker T. Washington High School. It's no secret that I graduated from Maury High School, and that Maury High School has had the Maury A., the Maury B., the Maury C., and even the Maury E. done to it. The last time Maury High School was renovated was in nineteen eighty-nine. And unfortunately, we didn't replace the bricks. And so now, where we should be almost forty, fifty years thinking about another building, we now have to think about Maury High School and the safety of those students each and every day. Well, it's been since nineteen seventy-four since Booker T. Washington High School has had any real focus done in its academic program. And so when we talk about inequities, there's a real inequity there. So this resolution, and what resolutions do, is to codify and to express the will of the board to make sure that it places a priority within the planning process. So the action today would send a message back to the Facilities Committee to include in the overall planning. That's why there's no dollars, figures attached to this, so that the committee could do its will, do its job, which myself and Mr. Jordan serve on, to ensure that we could make sure that book, we send a message to the Booker T. Washington community that we do take this as a priority. I also have to raise the other concern. When we have to take Maury High School down and determine what we're gonna do with it, whether it's a brand-new Maury High School, or we keep the facade, we've gotta think about where we're gonna put those students at. Which means that we've gotta put some focus on another one of these high schools in order to build up the program. There's no secret to it. There's a reason why the attendance level is nine hundred and seventy at Booker T. Washington High School. There was an attempt, and everybody knew about it, to get rid of Booker T. Washington High School. We need to put the focus, we cannot operate this district on less than five high schools. And so therefore, we have to put this resolution, which is doing, we keep, let me just go back to this political thing. I'm not up for reelection, so it, politics for me, this is not what I'm doing this for. I represent constituents, not only across this entire city, but in Ward Three. And Booker T. Washington High School, along with Norview High School, are one of the two high schools that I represent. I strongly believe, and I told the task force from the beginning, I tried to do this when I first got in the office, and the meeting was shut down by some of the same individuals who are saying that we, they're not gonna support this resolution. So I posted it as a public meeting, so that individuals in the community knew that we were having this, so that any board member could show up and be a part of the conversation. I also said that we gotta come together to have a conversation, because as long as there's confusion, nothing's getting done. So for three months, we've come together. May not have been the perfect process, but we've come together and I've listened to my constituents. That's not politics, folks, that's advocacy. And now I'm bringing advocacy to action today, before my colleagues, because I listen to the people that I represent, the people who put me here, to take in all of their concerns, to take in their, their, what they had to say, and to put this on paper and to bring it forth. So this is what we have, and you know, I remember my seventh grade service class about politics and a tool of politics, and it's called propaganda. And the Oxford Dictionary defines propaganda as "information especially of a biased or misleading nature used to promote or publicize a particular political cause or point of view." I haven't done that, but what we have seen are flyers that have gone out, talking about a particular school, and I'll share these with my colleagues if they haven't seen them, but they've been paid for and authorized by Rodney Jordan. I'm not politicizing a thing here before this. We need to move forward, and I will talk about it at our, um, at our later on, but I am ready to move forward into this new decade and new twenty twenty, working with our colleagues. But we have got to move forward and stop doing this stuff. Booker T. Washington High School needs a Phase One feasibility, which means look internally at the building, to look at its programs, to look at the career pathways, we've had some great conversations, so that we can come back, present back with members of the community, with the consultant, to say, how can we build this program, and not do what we did to Southside STEM Academy? Build a building and then think about the programming. We're talking about looking at the programming and then looking about the facility around it. So I encourage my colleagues to vote in favor of this resolution, and let's move forward on something.
Thank you, Mr. Clanton. I would like to recognize your efforts, um, for the close communication and efforts that you have made to truly engage your various stakeholders of the Booker T. Washington community, including students, staff. You have worked collectively with the administration, you've involved city council members and the citizens to listen to their concerns. You've identified solutions, and you are employing a comprehensive strategy to begin addressing an important concern. This resolution is through a lens of equity, and most of all, it focuses attention on the staff and the students. Directly it tie, it directly ties to the accountability plan, academic outcomes, and climate. We have heard from our Specialty Committee the concerns that they brought forth to us about the specialty program at Booker T. Washington. And while the process is still one that we can always strive to do better, I think that the most important thing that I have heard while my time on the board is that we can't identify when the board is taking action. And I think that, for records, the action that the board has to take is through a motion and a resolution and a vote. That is how we declare actions that are being done. That's how we say, when we discuss priorities, that's how we give it the emphasis that it needs. And of course, we want to talk about this in the context of all of our schools. We know how important all of our schools are, the programs, the funding, et cetera. However, this is an issue that is going to give some heightened attention to one of our five high schools that needs to be focused on through an equity lens, through the program. And so I will be voting yes to affirm the resolution.
May I speak further?
I'll call the question.
I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and close the discussion on the matter right now, and we're gonna call the question. Uh, Ms. Tanner, if you can please call the roll.
Bassin?
I'm voting no, because I do have respect for the students and communities. I support moving forward on Booker T. Washington, but that is something that this board and the former board has already committed to, if we had just been allowed to do the work to get us there. We had a meeting. I'm gonna finish my comment and explain why I'm voting no.
Point of order. We are in a vote.
We, and.
Yea or nay?
And we have talked about the academic programming of Booker T. Washington on two occasions.
Ms. Bassin.
We have committed to improving the program.
Ms. Bassin.
There is only one person up here who is making this political.
Excuse me. Ms. Bassin, we have the opportunity for discussion. I respect your viewpoint.
That was the first discussion that we have had about the, about this resolution. It was the first discussion that we have had.
Ms. Tanner, please proceed with the roll.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
If this is the process that we're going to take, I am looking for the Southside, Southside Task Force to meet with me so that we can set up the same resolution for St. Helena, for Lake Taylor, Lake Taylor High School, Lake Taylor Middle School, and any other school that is in my district. If this is the approach that we're going to take, I am looking for my constituents to set up task force so that we can sit down and decide how we're going to do this. But I will vote yes for it, because we're, we have been put in a difficult position. You say it's not political, but it's everything, it is, everything about it is political. And you put us in this difficult situation where we either.
Yea or nay, please?
I said yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Martin? Jordan?
Nay.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you.
And when we come before, I want the same response that we did today out of my group. When my community comes before this group with their resolution, I want the same response.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next item on our agenda is item six. The next item on our agenda is Item 6.05, School Board Budget Priority Approval. Okay. Earlier in the work session today, we had the opportunity to discuss our school board priorities. There has been three different robust discussions that we've had. I want to thank Ms. Smith and Mr. Clanton for working together on the most recent document that has been put together that basically summarizes priorities that board members have. Priorities range from instruction in the classroom, safety, to community engagement. If the board is comfortable with having a motion to support the priorities, then I would like to have a motion on the floor to reflect the priorities that have been discussed in the work session.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Let's be clear. Mr. Clanton did not work on this. I contacted him on several occasions to get his input on this project, and I did not get one response from him.
And so, Madam Chair, you can remove me, because she is correct.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion on the floor to accept the priorities as presented earlier in the work session?
Move to accept.
Is there a second? There is a second, Ms. Camson. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to point out that there were several comments that were made about resource officers tonight. But I would be remiss if I did not add that that was not the only item that was sitting on my priority list, that I talked about extending full-year school counselors. I talked about trauma. But I also had had several parents, particularly from the elementary school level, who have reached out to me, some not even from my own ward, but just who knew me because I grew up in those neighborhoods, who were concerned about the safety of their students, even at the elementary school level. So regardless if it's resource officers or some type of security, I want to ensure that all of our students, regardless if they're in high school, middle school, or elementary, every student, all means all in Norfolk Public Schools, that they are safe. So that's my comment on that.
Thank you. Ms. Camson, Ms. Basine?
I would also like to address the situation with the security added to elementary schools. I've been doing this since I joined the board. It was my... Getting the task force started was a priority for me when we voted it in in September of 2018. I was, as everyone here knows, a longtime employee of Norfolk Public Schools. I worked as a teacher, a reading specialist, elementary specialist, assistant principal, and principal, principal. I was principal of Ocean View Elementary School when Sandy Hook happened. And we were in the old building, and in that old building, the entrance was exactly the same as it was at Sandy Hook. Glass front doors that were shot out, so that the murderer could enter the building. A principal and a meeting with some other people to the right where the office was running out and being shot. And the six-year-olds in first grade to the left. He went down that hall, shooting those children. There was no security. There was no security. And Ocean View looked the same, set up exactly the same. And you can imagine how my teachers in first grade felt, how my students and their parents felt, and why we didn't have any security. It was very emotional for us at our school. It looked exactly the same. So yes, I have pushed for security staff, police officers, security personnel, somebody in that building. And I'm not quite sure why everyone's afraid of the police. Well, and that's, you know, that's everyone's opinion.
I called for the question, and Ms. Camson, second?
I'm sorry. Hold on a second.
I thought she made a motion.
I'm sorry. Hold on.
She made a motion, and I stepped in the motion. If I could just finish what I was saying, because I've listened to some very long speeches, and I haven't talked. But I want... We have security in all of our schools, except for the schools where our youngest children are. We have security in this building right now, right now. We're safe, but will our six-year-olds be safe tomorrow? We need to have some kind of security. Police officers, just regular school security, somebody needs to be there in those schools to protect our children. And I'm sorry to have to say it. I think it's a terrible thing that we have to be worried about the safety of our smallest, youngest students, but we do. So certainly open to whatever kind of security staff people want. What I think I wrote on mine was, what on my priority was, security staff, a security staff member in each building, because we need... I'm sorry to sit, but we need to protect our children. Thank you very much for letting me complete my statement.
Ms. Martin, then Ms. Basine, and then Ms. Smith... No, okay. Ms. Martin.
I'm here, too.
And then Mr. Jordan.
Okay. So we have a Safe Schools Task Force that's made up of law enforcement, FBI... Yeah, Homeland Security, principals, PTA members. And we've met twice, and the goal is to have recommendations from the task force by May. But this has come up from the very first meeting, from that we have security at our middle schools and our high schools, and we don't have security at our elementary schools. And we have principals who feel very vulnerable without having someone there at the door to help them when things escalate. And just to be clear, well, let me just go back to that. So these are recommendations from our principals, and I'm listening to them, and I'm giving them the priority. I'm going to do what they feel they need to keep our children safe. And I do have children in our schools, and so this, of course, hits home. The other thing is that there's this scare tactic, that these police officers are somehow going to be involved in discipline, and that is absolutely not the case. At any of these meetings, talking to our sheriffs, to our police chief, to any of... Anyone there, even the principals, all agree that that is not their role. They're going to have a very specific role in our schools, and they won't be involved in any of the discipline whatsoever. I have said this many, many times. So I just want to be very clear on that. But the end of the day, we're going to take the... We're going to evaluate the recommendations from this task force in May. And again, I'm going to side with what the principals need, what they're saying they need, and I'm not going to leave our elementary schools vulnerable.
Ms. Basine?
As it relates to the discussion and vote ahead, I thought we had a... We've had a good deliberative discussion around these priorities earlier today and in previous meetings. Although we talked a lot about, we've given Dr. Birdsong, you know, these priorities, but I would like to be flexible in that we may, through some of the recommendations that may come forward, we may have others and other data that may be provided to the board. We may have other priorities that rise to the top. So I'd like to be flexible in our support of these priorities. So I see them as, I would like it to be that these are working priorities and not set drafts that we're voting on.
And I do believe that, Ms. Tanner, I did ask her to label them as working priorities when she put them up on the board docs.
Yeah, I see one is, yeah.
We'll make sure that that is done. Mr. Jordan?
All right. First, I have a question, then I have a comment. So just for clarity, on the... What we're about to vote on, under the 605 public comment, there are five different documents. One of the documents is the old chart, but what we're voting on is the chart that Ms. Smith put together. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that the other ones somehow get identified as, yeah, in the minutes, what it is that we're actually voting on.
Not a problem.
My comment, it was similarly what I was trying to raise during the work session about the security piece, is just trying to get some clarity on what we were trying to achieve. So the goal of trying to make sure that protecting our students and staff from unwanted entry, I understand that there's a difference in the law definition for a school resource officer versus a school security officer. And what I was trying to bring forward, and I think what we have to be responsible in our work as a board, is understanding those differences. And that's why normally it's a good practice to have the administration experts to help explain those differences to us, so that we're clear and the public is clear on what we're advocating for. So the reason that you heard some of the feedback and even the comments that I made about school resource officers in elementary schools, they are police officers assigned to carry out certain tasks. And so no matter what we end up doing, it is important that, in my opinion, that the definitions be clear, the expectations be clear. Just this weekend, you could see in Vance County, North Carolina, where a resource officer in middle school was slamming a child. And unfortunately, these incidents happen disproportionately on students of color and students with disability, and that's what was trying to be communicated.
I understand that. Okay. Thank you very much. And I do... I do take the comments that were brought forth by members of the community about those statements. I would also just like to reiterate that as school board members, we try to be very accessible. If you see something on the docket, please send us an email or call us, so you can see clarity on some of the items, because certainly, while those items were highlighted, they were in a list of items which, at the forefront, is, at least for me, was academics, resources in the classroom, student achievement. So I would like to go ahead and have Ms. Tanner call the roll in support of the working document that we have for our priorities.
Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item that we have on our agenda is, let's see, no... We're going to go to the Use of Facilities Report. It was taken off of the consent agenda. Mr. Jordan, you had asked, requested that this be taken off.
Yes. I just wanted to get some clarity. I've raised this before around the fees that are being paid and the rentals that go along with it. So I don't want to prolong the meeting much longer, but if you look at the chart, you'll see in one column where it identifies fees being paid, and then in other columns, it's supposed to identify whether or not there are custodians or rental fees that are attached. And a few years ago, we went through a pretty extensive board effort, going through the policy committee and coming forward, to update our policy and to update our forms and our usage. And it just caught my attention, as I tend to pay attention to these things from our work, that I just couldn't get a sense of whether or not we were fully following and implementing the policy and the processes, because one of the issues when we deal with deferred maintenance and these other issues is if we... We always want our facilities to be available for community use, but if they are available for community use and we're paying custodians and staff and replacing paper towels and all those types of resources and don't have any resources coming in to try to cover it, it causes additional deficits and backlogs for maintenance. So it just appeared to me that, on that particular report, that maybe we still have some coaching to do around the process, to ensure that every building is following the process and that the district is recovering some funds for the stress that's being placed on the buildings. And that was what I wanted to raise.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan. Is there... Are there any other comments with the Facilities Use Report? Otherwise, I'd like a motion on the floor to accept the Facilities Use Report.
Madam Chair, I move to accept.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you. Item 6.07, Approval of the Minutes. These are the minutes from our November meeting. Mr. Jordan, you also asked to have these items removed from the consent agenda?
Yeah. I appreciate the work that's been going into the minutes. I think that Ms. Tanner has brought a very good style to it. I was still just having some challenges with trying to make sure that the action items that we were taking and voting on were clear. And I just thought there were a couple of places where I had some questions. But if the board be willing to bypass action on the minutes, I can send the items that I have questions on and comments. I can send the comments directly, and then we can take action. If not, then I'll send it later.
Ms. Tanner, when did you post the minutes for review for the board?
Friday.
Friday. So, Mr. Jordan, I understand the question that you were posing. However, it is actually very important that we approve the minutes tonight, because the minutes...
I'm fine. I'll just vote no. It's fine.
Okay. Okay. Any further?
I too had a couple of additions to include.
Minutes?
For the minutes, yeah.
So are you... Would you like to have...
Maybe we could amend it to include these items if...
So I understand that. However, when Ms. Tanner posted the minutes on Friday, it would be wonderful if there were concerns or questions. I mean, I know I brought some questions up to her to do that ahead of time, so that way we could make the edits and do what is necessary. So are they lengthy edits? Because otherwise, I'd like to move to approve them.
I can do the same. I mean, if you would move forward. I mean, they're not...
So may I just ask a... May I just ask you a clarifying question, then?
Sure.
So I just want to make sure, so I don't make this mistake at the next meeting. So the expectation is, is that on Friday, we are going to receive all the documents that we're supposed to review and prepare to take action on for the Wednesday meeting. If we find that, when we receive the materials on Friday, if we find that there are any issues, we do what at that time that we find them?
Then you should email Ms. Tanner, and you can copy the rest of the board if it is pertaining to an item that you're concerned about directly related to the board. If it's an item that's related to a personnel item, then you can directly email Dr. Birdsong.
And then in the case where documents are not available on Friday, and they show up Monday or Tuesday or the day of, what do you want us to do then?
I want you to let us know. And I'm sure that the expectation that we have set, coming out of our Virginia School Board Association meeting, is that the expectation is for them to be there on Friday. And I know that there have been a few instances where, for example, on Friday, we had the issue at Maury High School with the weapon. And there were many items going on, and Ms. Tanner, I know, made a mistake with uploading a certain document. She recognized it. She apologized for it, and we accept that.
Yeah, I just wanted to know our process. I appreciate that.
That's the process. And I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, but again, it is the expectation that we have those items, so that way we can iron out any questions ahead of time, so we can make our meeting smooth. So then, if there's no further discussion on the minutes, I'd like to approve the minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the minutes as presented.
The second was from Ms. Camson.
Basine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Nay.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item on the agenda is Citizen Comments on Non-Agenda Items Only. Thank you for being so patient and hanging in with us during this long meeting. Did not accept us to be going until 10:15.
Ms. Tanner, if you could please call our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Whitney Davis, followed by Casey Reed.
And Ms. Tanner, Casey Reed is sick.
Okay.
Good evening, Dr. Birdsong, Dr. Gabriel, and members of the board. My name is Whitney Davis, and this marks my one-year anniversary of speaking before the board about the need for more recess. More recess for Virginia's Norfolk has been campaigning for more recess in our schools for over a year, imploring the board administrators and teachers to recognize the crucial importance of play in education. Finally, there's something to celebrate, the recent recess pilot. I had hoped that recess pilot program would be a reality this year. But given the difficulty in scheduling and the mixed feelings of administrators, I wasn't sure it would get off the ground. I was happily surprised when I found out the pilot was happening. And for that, I would like to thank Dr. Cataldo and the four principals who chose to participate, Dr. Peterson, Mrs. McIntyre, Dr. White, and Dr. Litchmore. Thank you. Thank you so much for taking the time to rework your schedules to make this a reality. Thank you so much for giving our children the opportunity to learn the way children learn best through play. More recess for Virginia's Norfolk is very grateful. We know that play is essential in education. We also know that it, that more of it helps children grow academically, behaviorally, socially, emotionally, and physically. These are things that we know. So when we think about how to measure the success of the pilot, it would make sense to look for growth in these areas. I know NPS depends on data, so I hope it will make sure that the data gleaned from the pilot is reliable. The pilot is twenty-one school days long. So far, the weather during four of these days has been wet and students have not gone outside. Though the temperature has not been too low to go out, we've seen in the past that some teachers are more likely to take students out than others. Additionally, some teachers are offering the option of iPads during indoor recess. Screen time does not encourage physical activity, creative thinking, or socializing, all hallmarks of free play, nor does it improve behavior. My intent is not to point the finger, but to say that if multiple times, weather does not permit outdoor play, and if there are inconsistencies in how the recess period is approached, then the data gathered is rendered inconclusive. Though we can derive some usable information, we cannot draw any hard and fast conclusions with which to decide the future of recess in our schools. But here's what we can do to make a more informed decision. Extend the pilot and set clear guidelines for indoor recess so that the data will be reliable. Ensure, ensure that teachers understand the purpose of free play and rely on decades of data that already exists, proving that free play is necessary and beneficial in education. I know recess lives up to the claims I've made for it over the past year. I know that handled appropriately, this program will yield happier, healthier kids, more creative thinkers, and more diligent students. Again, I sincerely thank those involved with the pilot for their willingness to take this on. Please continue giving our children what they need. More recess. Thank you.
Next, we have Suzanne Saltziak, followed, followed by Tori Melton.
Hello, I'm Suzanne Saltziak, and I'm actually joining you guys from Virginia Beach Schools where we actually, just this year, put in place our twice-a-day recess program for all of our students. Um, and we cannot hear enough from all of our parents, all of the students, and even teachers and administrators about some of the success with it. Obviously, we're still waiting to see how things go for the long term, but the students, we get letters from them to our thing about how much happier they are, how much more they enjoy school, and how much more able they are to focus. But I, I'm a social worker as well, and so I care about all the kids, including ours in Norfolk. And so when there were many parents that couldn't make it here to come and share how much they had been enjoying your recess pilot, I volunteered to come and read some of their statements as well. From Mira Roberts. My daughter Elliot began the pilot recess program, and already we have seen the way it is positively impacting her day. While she generally loves school and learning, she's often mentioned to me since starting kindergarten that she just doesn't like sitting so much and for so long. When she went back to school this November after being sick and in the hospital with a ruptured appendix, the thing she said that made it the hardest to return was sitting for extended times, periods through the day. She would come out of school at the end of the day looking drained and tired, and oftentimes emotional and overwhelmed. Since she started having two recesses a day, she comes out looking bright and excited. She physically feels more energetic and less lethargic. According to Elliot, running around and playing is fun, and me and my friends need fun. I feel less tired when we sit and do work. Giving her an extra twenty minutes of play has given her energy and a sense of fun, two things developing kids need desperately to thrive in a learning environment. Thank you for sharing this pilot program at our school. We hope it will continue and extend to all grades in her elementary school. From Ann O'Keefe, as a parent of a second grader and kindergartner, enough outside and non-structured play is something that has always been important to our family in and out of school. The small amount of time built into the daily curriculum has always been a concern of ours. We are so happy to see that the school system is making this effort to change this by implementing a trial period of extra recess for kindergarten. We strongly support this and hope to see it become permanent, not only for kindergarten, but for all our grades. From generally Jenny Wernley. I want to say huge thank you to those who worked to make the recess pilot program happen. If only we could get the changes permanent and add my third grader and fifth grader to the groups that get to participate. My kindergartner at Larchmont Elementary is so much less anxious about school. I asked her why she likes having more time to play, and she said, "It makes me less scared at school when I don't have to wait so long to go outside." I feel so much better sending her to all-day kindergarten, knowing that she'll have two opportunities for unstructured play. And from La, La Di Pina. My son has been enjoying the second recess at Larchmont. He was very, very excited to tell me about it the first day. And I think that's all I have time for right now. But thank you guys for the opportunity to come speak again. And please, please, for the kids, they need this. As a social worker, I'm telling you, it will do so very much for their long term, especially with CHKD saying how much we have mental health issues growing by three hundred percent in our community, in the children with it.
Thank you.
We have Tori Melton, followed by Kristy Phillips.
Hello, good evening. Um, I just wanna continue to speak about the more recess initiative. I have two children at Larchmont Elementary, um, one of which is in first grade and is participating in the, um, pilot right now. And she's been very excited to come home and tell me about, um, her recess. Um, I have a little bit of words from her, um, on her behalf about having two recesses. She says, "I get to see my friends two times a day now, and I get to talk twice a day." Um, and I asked why recess was important to her, and she says it helps her to get her energy out. Um, my fourth grader, who is not participating, since it's only for the kindergarten and first graders, um, I just asked him also why recess was important, and it said, he said, "It helps him to settle down and to be more focused in class," and also that he gets to see his friends. And I asked, um, if he could have two recesses, um, how would that be helpful? And he said, "To be able to get his energy out and that he would be able to get more sunshine." Um, and I have words from my friend Kate Taylor, who has, um, two boys with sensory processing disorder. And she said that, um, as she is parenting her two children with sensory processing disorder, she has learned, um, the importance of recess and exercise and physical activity. Um, that it's not only good for her children's bodies to be able to move and to participate in recess, but it helps to organize their brain to help learning more effective, um, in the classroom setting. So I thank you again for allowing this pilot, um, to take place and to consider, um, the overall health and well-being of our children. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, good evening. Thank you so much for this opportunity. And, um, I again piggyback on what they are saying. Um, I have a daughter who's in kindergarten at Larchmont Elementary as well and is participating in the pilot program. And I just have a quote from her. She says, "I like going outside with the wind in my face and getting to play more outside. It makes me happier. The iPad makes my head hurt, and I like going outside more and playing on the swings, the slide, and playing with my friends. I love being able to run around with the sunshine." And, end quote. "Recess is my daughter's favorite part of the day. Since doing the pilot program, I have noticed a positive impact on her attitude and persona when she comes home from school. When she gets the extra time at recess, she is more energized at pickup, and overall, she is happier." My daughter comes home, uh, my daughter comes home often saying how they were, how they watch this or that in, in school, and, um, they're struggling and, okay, let me start. My daughter comes home often saying how they're watching this show or that show in, in the classroom setting. So if schools are struggling to find where to fit more recess in, then they can just minimize screen time in the classroom setting or showtime, and it will fix itself, allowing more ti- outside time while releasing the kids at the normal time at three twenty. We are born with a natural instinct to explore with our minds and our bodies. Physical activity is very important for these young bodies that are developing. They start with their day early and end later with homework sent home on a daily basis, leaving minimal time for physical activity. The pilot program has done so many amazing things for my child, and to continue this program would benefit so many students and their teachers as well. I know there would be less anxious kids, kids being able to focus more while in the classroom setting, and this will benefit both the student and the teacher. This pilot program is effective and needs to expand to all the other grades to adopt and fit into their normal school schedules. Thank you so much again.
Kara Pope, followed by Ellen Swursting.
Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Kara Pope, and I'm speaking on behalf of my six-year-old daughter, who is a kindergartner at Larchmont Elementary School. Um, prior to the pilot program, I was noticing Tegan being very anxious going to school. My child, who has been to school since she was two at preschool, loving every moment of it, crying to go and joy. I was noticing she was getting upset. She was worried. Um, I was noticing at dinnertime, which we have always sat together as a family since she was sitting in a high chair, my child couldn't sit. She's jumping up and down. And I'm like, "Tegan, you have to sit. It's dinnertime." And I was just noticing it was physically impossible for my child to sit. And she's like, "Mommy, I'm sitting all day. I just need to move my body." Since the pilot has been taking place, she has been so excited, running up to me at pickup time. "Mommy, we got the extra recess time today." Um, I don't think she fully grasps the concept that they're supposed to do it every day. But she also says she's very sad when she doesn't get to do it and they have to go on the iPad. It makes her eyes hurt and it makes her head hurt. As a former NPS teacher, I've seen it with my own kids, my own students. The twenty minutes dwindles when you're trying to get twenty-four kids down the stairs and through the halls and outside, and finally, um, getting them play. It's just, it's just not long enough. And they need the more time to socialize and to be creative and to use their imagination. So I hope that we can consider this and make it permanent. Thanks.
Ellen Swursting. Okay, she's not here. Okay. Chris Moran.
Hi, good evening, board. Um, maybe I'll say good night at this point. Uh, thank you for, thank you for taking the time to listen to me speak. I appreciate it. I will probably not take the full three minutes. I wanted to come and talk first and foremost as a father of, uh, two children. One daughter is at the Gint School. Um, she's in first grade. My other daughter will hopefully be at the Gint School next year. I'm also active-duty military, currently deployed overseas. I'm on leave right now, so excuse the, the facial hair. Promise it's legal. It is legal. But I wanted to also talk about recess. From a unique position of being active-duty military and of being familiar with military families coming, coming to the area, a lot of military families move here and choose not to live in Norfolk. They choose to live in Chesapeake or Virginia Beach. And one of the big reasons they cite for that is, "Oh, the schools in Norfolk aren't good." Now, I, I don't believe that. I love Norfolk. I think the schools are great. I think there's lots of opportunities. But I think there is a bit of a branding issue, and there's a bit of a reputation issue, um, that happens. Recession offers, this recess program offers a unique opportunity to kind of rebrand and change the reputation. I can tell military families when they're coming in, "Hey, did you know that Norfolk Public Schools just, just approved two recess periods for elementary school? This is cutting-edge stuff. This is at the forefront. A lot of schools aren't doing this. Norfolk Public Schools is." I would love to be able to share that along with the other great stories of the, uh, of what we're doing and of what the school district's doing. And, uh, and finally, I'll say, I've heard a lot of, a lot of challenges tonight. Um, a lot of challenges that cost a lot of money, that are political, that, that are, that are problems, that are issues that we're working hard and you are all working hard to solve and come with. This is not one of those big problems, in my opinion. This is something that's not very difficult to do. It doesn't cost money. It's not particularly political. It can be done. And it, and it will be a huge, I think, success and mark to communicate to the people, uh, that are coming into the area and that are here that not only is this something that, that we can get done, but that the school board listens to concerned parents, that you can make an effort, you can make a change. This is something you can be involved in the community. And I think this, um, would go a long way to communicate to military families when they come in, "Hey, you want to be a part of the Norfolk school system. You want to live in Norfolk for all the great reasons, including the school." Uh, and that's what, and thank you for the time.
Sarah Shalock, followed by Mary Bowers.
Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, I have two children at Larchmont Elementary, a third grader and a first grader. My first grader is participating in the recess pilot program. Um, the first day that the pilot, that the program launched, it was right after Thanksgiving break. I'd sort of forgotten about it. He came home and said, "Mom, I had the best day ever at school. We had two recesses." My children are very high-energy, but they're also very neurotypical. Um, I know recess benefits them, but I know even more so, children have sensory processing disorders, ADHD, behavior problems. It helps them even more. So, um, to keep all of our children in mind. Um, we are a military town, um, like Chris said, and, uh, reset, we have tons of kids coming in and out all throughout the school year. And recess is really a time for them to develop their friendships and really feel like they're a part of the community. Um, I had a friend a couple of years ago say her son had a birthday pretty early in the year, and they just moved here. And she was like, "He doesn't have time to make friends. We don't have any, anybody to invite to his birthday party." Which is pretty sad. Also, I want to echo what Chris said. We have heard so many issues that our schools have, and most of them are very expensive, very complex. Um, more recess might seem like a really silly thing for us to be asking for and a little superfluous, but it's something that is free and should be relatively easy. And also, well, it's proven to benefit all of our children, both their overall well-being and their academic progress. Thank you.
Hi, thank you all for your time. And I'll also try to keep it brief. I piggyback on what everyone else says. I just really want to thank the school board and everyone who's been working on implementing this pilot program. I know that there actually was a lot of, of work and juggling that went into this and that we're, will go into continuing to expand recess for all our students. But as you can see, we think this issue is really important, and I just want to, um, really reinforce one thing in particular tonight, which is that a lot of times I think we think of as, of recess as extra time. It's not instructional time, but it's really important. Like Sarah was saying, it's a really important part of students' learning experience to have that social, emotional, and interpersonal time with other kids. Especially in today's society, kids don't have a lot of time to be playing with each other in a setting that's not directed by adults. They either can't play outside when they get home because maybe they don't live in a safe neighborhood, or parents are working, or maybe they are involved in a million activities that are structured and being run by adults. And this is a time when we can, again, level that playing field for all of our students and give them that time that they need to develop these really important social, social, emotional skills. And I know some of the feedback that we've gotten has been that recess can be difficult to implement in some schools, specifically because of these logistical issues. I know it's not free because you have to pay for the people and the personnel to, to, uh, supervise them. But I think that you will find that recess can only improve behavior issues ultimately in the long run, even if you have minor squabbles on the playground. Social workers, parents, teachers are becoming aware of those issues and able to deal with them in the school setting rather than those issues falling through the cracks. So just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you very much again for your time.
Next, we have David Marriott, followed by Sharon Buckner.
Good evening. I'm David Marriott. Uh, I'm a father of a kindergartner at Larchmont Elementary. I'm also a pediatrician at CHKD. Uh, I do not speak on behalf of CHKD. I'm, I'm here independently- Uh, I do not speak on behalf of CHKD, I'm, I'm here independently, uh I'm a member of the American Academy of Pediatrics as well and uh some of the things I'll be sharing will be also in regards to recess. And I'll be uh ta- talking about uh two important papers that came from the academy, "The Crucial Role of Recess in 2013 and the Power of Play in 2018." So uh something that you all might know, taking care of children, um it's, it's a mantra we have in the field of pediatrics is that children are not little adults. There, there's a reason why pediatrics is a separate specialty in medicine, because how you approach them, how you treat them is different than adults. And it's true in other domains of their lives. So how they learn is not how a- adults learn. You know, you might ask, you know, "What is my work each day?" and I could tell you, "Well, this is what I do and then this is what my goals and objectives are in my work." And when you ask, if you were to say what a child's work is, a child's work is play, that is their work. And the reason is because that is how they learn and uh integrate their, their environment and what they are learning into um, into long-term uh memories and processes. So um the benefits of play, I, I think you all have um, you know, heard from some of our other speakers, I'll just quote a paragraph from um "The Power of Play." Children's play is not frivolous, it is brain-building, central part of healthy child development, a key to executive functioning skills and a buffer against negative impacts of stress. It is fundamentally important for developing 21st century skills, including social, emotional language and cognitive skills, all needed by the next generation in an economically competitive world that requires collaboration and innovation. The benefits of play cannot really be overstated. In our modern world too though, there's a lot of things that are competing for our kids' time. Uh, the average preschooler watches four and a half hours of TV and not every environment is suited to have uh good play um environments. And so, in a way recess is the last bastion of unstructured play for children. And uh, when I've heard about this pilot program for my own daughter, I, I thought this was phenomenal. Some countries, they have ten to fifteen-minute breaks after every hour uh for their elementary-aged children. Uh, that's based on data, that children have a forty to fifty-minute attention span, there's decreases in disruptive behavior in school, increases, improvements in memory, retention and uh cognitive abilities um in children that are having more recess time. So, looks like I'm at the end here, so to summarize, um, the, the academy doesn't have a specific recommendation on how much recess uh should be in a school because that's kind of dependent on the needs of the community. Um, the, what I can say though is that the data says that, as you approach up to sixteen minutes of unstructured time in a child's day, um then that's where you start seeing the most benefits and you get um increased benefit of recess time for those from disadvantaged backgrounds.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time.
Good evening, my name is Sharon Buckner, I do live here in, matter of fact, in Berkeley. And I am standing before you today on behalf of my son. He is a sixth grader at Blair Middle School. My son has been assaulted twice and we have only been in school four months. The second week of school, he was body slammed when he was in gym. Then October, he was, as a matter of fact, there was a student that got on the bus that he rode home on, slit, as a matter of fact, punched him in the face. This year, I truly, I did not believe this would be something that would take place here in Norfolk public schools. My son comes from private institutions, so therefore maybe I need to look at, what, maybe him being returning back to a public, I mean, a private institution? I did not. My two girls, they graduated from here in Norfolk public schools, it was nothing like that. And to have my son to be assaulted twice in four months, that is unsatisfactory. I need you all to fix the problem. Cause if not, then that means I'm gonna have to take my son elsewhere. Thank you.
James Washington, followed by Don Nash.
James.
I think Mr. Washington.
John Williams.
Mr. Nash.
Oh, Don Nash is here?
I'm sorry, Mr. Nash is here.
Hey, thank you again for uh letting me come up here and speak. You know, this is uh, I've watched you all on videos before, but this is my first time coming here to speak because, as you know, I have a concern for my kids, uh just like the lady was speaking about, her concern for her child. I think, I think as parents, we can all echo that. But you know, as I sit here today observing the meeting, um, I see two gentlemen up here, Mr. Jordan and Mr. Clanton. You guys, I, I know it, you guys are leaders on this, on this, on this board, okay? And I just think that if you two got together and bared your differences, we would have a much different school, school system, it would be a lot different. And I would say uh you could begin by at least sitting next to each other in a meeting, making small changes, small adjustments to say, "You know what, we're gonna stand an olive leaf, olive branch and, and you know, just say, 'Hey, we really care about the schools.'" Because I know you guys have your constituents and you represent different wards and whatnot at different schools, but you guys represent all of Norfolk. And also, when I'm watching the video about the delegates visiting the schools, why not let them visit J Cox? You know, or some of the other schools that are having, having tough issues. If we're gonna say, "Okay, it's a, it's a new, it's a new game in Richmond, okay? Let's take them to the tough places, let's have those tough conversations with them so that they can understand and let us underscore the need of what, what we, what we really have, what, what the real issues are." But um, but yeah, I just, I just really wanted to say that, that um, you know, I, I really think that we just gotta come together on this because the buck stops here, buck stops here, thank you.
Thank you.
John Williams, followed by Aaron Spears.
Good evening, Dr. Burson, school board members, Ms. Tanna. I come to you this evening with concerns about what happened at Maury High School. As you know, I got children, grandchildren at Maury High School. And I received a call about two fifteen, two hours after the incident, my phone rang from Norfolk Public School with a voice message saying something happened at the school. So my concern is why it took two hours for me to get some information, misguided information on top of that. And um, how did a gun get in the school? See, things is too relaxed. Do, do y'all really know what's going on at Maury? Do y'all really know what's going on in the street? It's far more than what you can imagine. So that one gun incident, that's not the end of it, believe me, I'm standing here telling you. So, so did y'all really get into investigating about how that gun got into the school? Would you sit here and believe that maybe more guns than been in the school? Would you believe it's gang, it's gang activity in the school? So, you know, it's a lot to it, then I see y'all got metal detectors, and ones, is they being used? Cause I don't understand how the gun just got in the school just like that. And um, a whole lot of parents is asking questions about it, a whole lot of parents is concerned, I'm not saying y'all not concerned about the kids because them is all my kids. So, I'm very concerned about my babies in Norfolk Public Schools and I know y'all is so, we gotta figure this out, we gotta figure this out together. And especially in the high schools, the metal detectors and ones need to be used at all time in a high school because most of the kids between fifteen or eighteen years old is running around in gangs, carrying guns, shooting at each other in the streets. So we gotta make better protection for our children. And before I go, I just gotta say this, I, I sit back here, you know, y'all ought to be ashamed of yourself, really. Why can't we just get along, love each other? It don't make no sense if, think about it, if the teachers in the school were scrabbling back and forth in front of the children, y'all get rid of. Because that's not how it's supposed to be, then y'all sit in front of all of us and if y'all could, if y'all could just see, if this was videotaped, y'all could just look at it, sit back and look at it, I think y'all shake your heads too. Come on now, y'all can do better than that, y'all really can. I mean, show each other some love. Thank you.
Next we have Aaron Spears, followed by Barrett Hicks.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I have a massive concern about protocol in your elementary schools and the breach of it. I'm here to be the voice for a five-year-old boy who literally doesn't have one because autism took it away from him. My five-year-old is largely non-functioning in communication, he couldn't tell you if he had a boo-boo. So when he came home from school on September the nineteenth with this mark on his neck, and I asked his teacher why that happened, nobody knows. Nobody knows how my son in a classroom of ten with three adult women in the classroom knows how that happened, or can tell me how his legs have this many bruises on them, or how this bruise managed to get on the back of his knee. He's not a child who has a high tolerance to pain. So you can imagine my fury, and my hands are shaking just thinking of showing you this, my fury, when on November the nineteenth, this was on my son's leg, inside his right thigh. Marks consistent with an adult hand. And on the back of his calf, nail mark under his arm, bruising under the other one. You're happy to have him if you want to take a look at him, but why was I never told that my kid was injured in a classroom? If there was an incident, I, I could understand, trust me, he has autism, I understand his behaviors, I have seen those behaviors in other children with autism. Why was I never told what happened to my son? Why was there a massive, I, I mean, it's, it's like you're just covering it up? The three teachers have been removed from the classroom and I want the principal held accountable. Because my husband and I sat in front of her and discussed this within a week of it happening and protocol was not followed. The aides were not present to account for their role in this. They should have all been removed from that classroom the minute we raised an issue and three adults couldn't tell me how my five-year-old got hurt. And that gentleman is right, you guys should be ashamed of yourselves. I sat in this room for almost four hours, listening to you bicker while I waited to tell you this. One gentleman in this room knows what's been, what my family's been going through. One gentleman sitting right there has been instrumental in making sure that I had resources available to me. The rest of you should have known, should have reached out, and you should be doing more. And I wonder if the parents of the children at Bayview Elementary wouldn't maybe be interested to find out that the school that their children just got transferred to is now under active investigation from CPS for another incident? This is not isolated, this is happening widespread and you guys are not protecting our children.
Thanks again, I'll be brief, I agree with the sentiment both ways that you guys have, I haven't seen this before. I mean, how do we have a committee of one? Mr. Clanton, I'm really surprised that you didn't get with Ms. Smith to come forward and they just say, "We're not doing this?" Come on now, we gotta, we gotta stop this. And I'm, I'm really appalled to hear that you guys are talking about moving another one of our schools and where I'm from, Lake Taylor, down the ladder, I'm definitely for Boogie T being pushed forward, but if your consultants have come in and said it should be Lake Taylor, number one, how do we keep getting pushed down? We gotta look at the process. Unacceptable, truly unacceptable. And thank you Christine for stepping up to saying you, we are gonna ask for the same thing. Thank you. I'm gonna end this with, on a positive note, I wanted to thank, I really truly want to thank MPS for their coverage of these playoffs and championships or whatever, it was really great to be able to sit home and actually look at my computer or on my phone or whatnot and have the comments of someone that may not have been able to get out. I was able to, but to be able to see it and, and uh families to be able to see their children, it was an awesome piece. So, again, you guys did an awesome job with that, the coverage of the playoffs and the championship. Thank you, thank you.
James Jarman Jr., followed by Thomas Calhoun.
Thanks, Mr. Jarman.
Okay, um now we have Thomas Calhoun.
Madam Chair, good evening.
Evening.
Board members, um, I go around, I try to talk to my members in as many schools I can every year, just to see how they doing, what concerns they have. Been to three or four schools this year, last night I, yesterday I was in uh St. Helena and it was normal, the normal complaints from the normal areas, normal concerns until they told me the story about a stench in the school. It smells so vile, so bad. Strange thing to say, it starts about one o'clock every day and I immediately thought about tides coming in. And then they said it's been happening for, since last year. That's when I, yeah. Read you some comments, "It smells like sewage. It's so strong it burns my nose. I have gone through more asthma pumps than I can remember. Teacher's toilet backs up and overflows. Two staff members have slipped and fallen in the hall on wet floor backing up from the water fountain, one of them is on my executive board." I, I was just astounded, terrified at what they were saying, at the smell, uh said the boys bad mother hall the other day was smelling like fish. It's not, it's not in this building, it's, it's the sewage, obviously. Principal has done her diligence, she's talked to maintenance, they've been out, I, we checked today, uh, we were told by maintenance they dropped a tablet in the drain. I didn't come in tonight to point the fingers and blame, I do believe it's a city matter, but if, if it's affecting the school, I don't know how they take it for a year, I asked them over and over, I went to bed and as I stand today, I still understand how they sit and work in the building that smells like that. So, what I did come here for, um, is I, I, I know the staff knows, the parents know, they have complained to the principal, um, maintenance knows, they've been out there. I know downtown knows because the executive director was there in October on the tour, he went in the teacher's room next to the bathroom where it originates. He said it smelled awful and he left. So I know, damn, somebody down there, at least I know he knows. The only one I wasn't sure about was you all. Don't know if you know. I told them last night when I left there, I was gonna come here tonight and I was gonna tell you. And so I have. And so I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Sasha Criscold.
Hello, my name is Sasha Criscold. I am the parent of a freshman student at Maury. And I've come here out of great concern over the incident that happened on Friday the 13th at Maury, where a weapon was discharged in a classroom full of students. And as the result of that, the communication that followed was most perfunctory, letting us know that it was not a drill, that it was a lockdown, and then letting us know when the lockdown ended, and when the threat had been removed. By the threat, I mean the weapon had been found and removed, and when we could get our children back. And so, of course, I took to the internet to look up what the Virginia code is, and what the school policy is on having a weapon in a classroom. And I'm here to ask you today to change the policy as it is written in the Norfolk Public Schools rules for 2019 and 2020, as it relates to firearms. It says that the, and I'm going to paraphrase, "That the school board may however determine based on the facts of a particular situation, that special circumstances exist, and no disciplinary action, or another disciplinary action, or another term of expulsion is appropriate." And I am here to ask you today to please change that language and change this policy to a zero-tolerance policy, because there is no special circumstance for having a loaded weapon in the hands of a child in a classroom. Please. And to answer this gentleman's question, yes, we do have resources that aren't utilized. Bag checks aren't done every day, and on Monday morning, the one metal detector they have was unplugged and folded in half, as always, next to the front door. So, instead of asking for more resources, I'm asking first to change that which we can immediately, this policy, and using the resources we have. Thank you.
This concludes our speakers for this evening, this signed up.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tanner, and thank you again to all of our speakers for staying with us through this evening. The last item that we have on the agenda is matters of the board. Again, we are going to be going from matters of the board to entertain a motion to go back into closed session to finish up material that we had not had the opportunity to complete. So, for the sake of time, colleagues, if we could limit our matters of the board to one minute, I would greatly appreciate that. Ms. Camson.
I just want to remind everyone, as I do each time, that I'd still like to see a audit of Title I and Title II budgets, especially where, where the money's going, and why we seem to have so little of it in the schools. And also, I'd like to have something checked about FOCUS Schools, I'd like to have a presentation to show if there's been any progress for all the money we're spending to that company. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan.
Wanted to like to ask the board to reconsider having citizens' comments on non-agenda items at the end of the meeting. I know it's being looked at, but tonight is an example of why I think having it up front allows for citizens, especially those with children, to make their comments, and we can continue with our business. Second item is, I know we're gonna go forward to discuss the acting superintendent's contract. I received that today. I would like to ask that it, that we consider deferring it, so the board has adequate time to, to review it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan, for your comments. Anyone else? For those who are still left, I would like to wish you happy holidays. Please have a, a very safe, relaxing time period. I know we have two weeks off. I know that several of you said if I can get through Wednesday night, I'll be good, and we feel the same way. So, please enjoy and treasure your time with your family, be thankful for all the gifts that we have. If there are others in need that you can lend a helping hand to, please do so. That being said, for my colleagues, I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, move that we go in closed session.
Second.
We have Mr. Cloud that will be reading the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that the members of the school board go into a closed session for purposes set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, for the following purposes. Paragraph A, discussion of prospective candidates for employment and similar personnel actions in connection with specific individuals. The subjects of this portion of the session concern further discussion of candidates for the position of superintendent, and discussion of possible amendments to the acting superintendent's contract. And I should add, just so that it's clear, that when you come out of the executive session, there may be a contract to be voted on, depending on, on the, the discussion in executive session. So that will be a further open session action. Paragraph B, discussion of disciplinary and other matters involving specific students, and/or information contained in a scholastic record concerning specific students. The subject of this portion of the motion concerns discussion of specific students in connection with the recent firearm incident at Maury High School. And C, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring advice of counsel. The subjects of this portion of the session concern advice of counsel as needed regarding the subjects identified in paragraphs A and B.
Any further discussion before entering into closed session? Sorry, the microphone wasn't on. No. Ms. Tanner?
Ready. Basine?
Aye.
Hamson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
He had to step out.
Okay. Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.